Well, to order, we're a little late, but we just have a quorum 7:10. All right. Welcome, everyone. It seems like a long time since our March meeting, but this is only been a month. No members of the public here tonight. Additions or corrections to the agenda? I don't have any. Do you have any?
Really? Anybody?
Anybody need an agenda? Do you need to fill something out for us?
I was expecting a big public. Okay, I guess that's it.
Okay. What do you say?
No need for example session.
You don't have any corrections or?
I don't think I have any.
No example session, we should be out of your court tonight. Okay. And like I said, no members of the public. Correspondence? I have none.
There is none.
None.
None? Nobody else? Okay. We're looking right through. Principals report. That was emailed to you a few days ago, last week sometime.
Want to take the chief financial officer, Burke?
I can if Frank's wanting me to do that. No problem.
I'm recommending we do so. I know it's.
Okay. Let's do that first.
I'll have a change to the agenda.
Let's see. Okay.
Okay, I do have a financial report, so I'll hand that around. Where's all my financial staples? Oh, that's right. It's a single. I'm sorry, Jim. That was not a single-page version for the board. That's what you have. Same page. There you go.
You got it.
I have.
You do have a detailed one, and this is the board summary report.
Do we have enough? Yeah. Move the picture.
Okay. So, what I have here is our balance sheet and then also our revenue and expense statement. If we look at our balance sheet, year-to-date through end of the third quarter, March 31st, you see we have sufficient cash for operations, 1.2 million. But most of that cash is from the tax anticipation note that you approved back in summer. And that is invested at a slightly higher interest rate than what it costs us. So, that's why we draw the full amount at the beginning of the year. And as long as we have positive cash flow, we're making a little bit of money on the difference between the income and expense on that. But this is not unusual for us to be where we are there. You see on fund balance, difference between your assets and liabilities is a typical position as we wait for our third and fourth quarter tax assessments. And I also have to bill the second semester tuition. So, on the next page, the reverse side, you see, this is the standard report that if you were looking at our audit report, you would see the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance. And again, at the very bottom of the page, you see that same number, year-to-date fund balance. So, that's a key measure of where we're at. And then you're accustomed to seeing the difference between the budget plan and the year-to-date actuals. And you can see that in typical fashion here, being three-quarters through the year, we have about three-quarters still to receive. You know, 6,552 is the total revenue with still 1.871 to be received, as I mentioned. The lion's share of that is the tail end of our third quarter and then all of our fourth-quarter tax assessments from the member towns. And then also the tuition. I still have to bill some of the tuition. On the expense side, in total, the 1,757 still to go. It is, that's about 80 percent. And this does include, actually, I did include this as of one payroll in April. So, that does have a little bit of the April transactions in it. The direct instruction is a little over budget because of the way in which we budgeted, where we have a reserve for the negotiated agreement this year. But we have offsets to that throughout the budget. I also was just reviewing with Durin. We've had a couple of additional programs included in the general fund this year associated with the grants that Durin has initiated. So, we will have some areas of the budget that are over the expense, but we'll see the revenue that funds that.
For example?
For example, is the SAP grant was about 40,000.
It is.
Yeah. And another area is, what do we call the student support grant in crisis?
So, the SERV grant, schools, emergency response to violence. So, that's still a possibility that we receive it.
And then the other example is down under professional development. You see the 44 budget, 59 spent year-to-date. That will be funded by the federal grants that we are applying for. Actually, Stephen and I and Larry Garland met today to make sure that amendments reflect the changes that we've made and that we're able to implement the excellent programs that Durin is organizing. And in addition to that, in particular, in professional development, on a revenue statement, that's at the top of the page in your, in this single page that I've handed out. Under this miscellaneous local donations, I will change that title, but that 13,006 is largely the fees that Durin was able to create interest. And for example, of that 13,000, 7,000 is from the Wyndham Southwest Supervisory Union that participated in Mahasharma Math Literacy Initiative that was conducted this fall. And then we, there was significant amount of revenues from Brattleboro teachers and Hill River and a number of participants across the state. So, that's all very good, very good news. Any questions? Yes, Patty?
A couple. It says budget FY14. Is that right?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. I just put that in. It should say 13.
Okay. And I did the pay orders, and there was one very large pay order in there. It was the very last one I did. Are those reflected here?
The Wyndham Central?
Yeah.
They are probably not in there because that is a vendor transaction in April, and I've tried to cut this off in, as of March.
So, are there any surprises coming that you know of?
No.
Like extraordinary special ed costs that we hadn't anticipated or anything like that?
There are some variances, but no extraordinary variances at this point.
Yes.
Any other questions I can answer?
I'd like to give the board afternoon, give some feedback about the information, and maybe you want to continue, you know, to reflect on that between now and the next meeting. But I was just with Frank at Townsend last night, and we certainly are trying to move towards a reporting system that reports to the boards in the big picture where you should be alarmed or ask questions and then have the detail for that provided based on, you know, question. But I know for a while there, we were giving out, I don't know about to this board, but there was a check register with all the, every single expenditure. And it was way too much information from those boards because shifting our current new system, we don't sometimes show a budget line item. So, that's zero on what's budgeted, but we're expending it, so it's a negative over here. And when a board sees a whole bunch of parentheses on a spreadsheet, on accounting system, it is cause for alarm. If they add them together in groups, for example, lawn maintenance, lawn maintenance, snowplow, and maintenance of a building together, and it comes out to be okay, then you're really not in trouble. So, that's where we're trying to get to a categorical, bigger picture lined up with your budget. But next year it'll be better because Frank points out, we'll be able to write the budget in this new apta program that we have. So, the codes will line up a lot better. Right now, you unfortunately don't have many blanks in the first row there under budget, right?
Right. Yeah, and the revenue, we mentioned that, you know, like the SAP, you know, that was, that's a grant that Durin secured after we had voted on the budget.
So, that's why it's not in the budget, but.
Yep.
So, there's a couple of blanks up there in the actuals. Are those, because I'm just having to receive those funds?
That's right. Yep.
State aid, for example?
Yeah, the career center state aid is actually just a journal entry that happens toward the end of the year as part of Act 68 accounting requirements. The money actually doesn't come to Leland and Gray. It goes directly to the career center, but we're supposed to record the revenue and the expense on their behalf. And the extraordinary aid, you know, back to Patty's question at this point, the extraordinary cost that we expected has not occurred. So, that's offset on both sides.
I do have to say this was easier to do than it has been recently.
Good.
Very organized.
Yeah. Good. We're gaining on learning the reporting options and formats.
Yes.
Good.
So, Stephen mentioned about the sequestration in his report. I don't know if there's anything more you have to say about that and how it may affect us.
Yeah, we have.
How it concerns me.
Yeah. We have reviews that in, for a point of reference, when you look at this general fund, 6.5 million in revenue and expense, and then we look at the federal grant portion of that, you see that 79,000, Title I and II. So, that's the primary revenue source and of course, a funding source for programs that we have relied on. That, at this point, the commissioner has given us some guidance, and there's no clear path on where we're going to end up, but the speculation is maybe a 5 percent change down as a result of what is happening in Washington and the changes in funding being distributed to the states. So, it will have an impact, but it's a relatively small percentage of our total funding. So, it won't eliminate programs.
So, that's 5 percent of that, one little.
Of that 79,000, yeah.
And that's the only area we're seeing impact with sequestration?
For Leland and Gray, directly at our, on our local level, yes. But at Wyndham Central.
Which we pick by a bit up.
There are programs that are, they're, they're expensed there and funded there. And the vast majority of that is sub-granted to the schools. So, of the 335,000, about 220 is like we're, that's, you know, we're, R79 is the 220 that's just sub-granted to the schools. And they employ people and administer the programs. But there is another, a little more than 100,000 that's operated at the central office for professional development programs. And that's going to be the same, you know, it could be more, but our guess at this point is a 5 percent.
And it sounds pretty likely that this is going to go on for a little.
Yeah. It'll be like 10 years.
And it's not just this year.
Indefinitely.
I mean, if it gets going.
Yep. Well, we're planning a party. I mean, the administrative team is meeting, principals, you know, will certainly be scratching their heads and figure out what we can, what we can do to make sure that we're not overcommitted when we apply for the consolidated federal grants beginning July 1. And, you know, fortunately, we have been investing quite a bit of that money in training and in professional learning, internal capacity of our staffs to meet our students' needs better. So, we certainly think that we can deal with it. But it's going to pinch the smaller schools regarding their Title I, what they usually call the Title I teacher or an extra teacher or an extra para that was generally dealing with supporting students. 5 percent isn't enough to, you know, cause somebody to be gone, but it is enough to reduce their time or oblige this local district to come up with the difference. So, that is something that you certainly want to be aware of as a direct consequence of this sequestration.
And I guess everybody's aware of the movement up at the state level on the budget and how to cut back on small schools' grants.
Yeah.
Because that's taken quite a sharp turn in the last.
Has it gone now? They're getting a little more worked up about that, huh?
Yeah.
We've been predicting whether for a long time in that direction, but.
I was a little surprised that there's something going on up there right now.
What Emily's referring to for the audience on the camera is that the small schools grant, which runs something from 40,000 to 75,000 depending on the town, I think that's about right enough, Frank? Is a grant that enables the smaller schools to basically survive, to meet their personnel needs, costs, help meet their costs. And there are about, I don't know, over 100 schools, I think, that benefit from that grant throughout the state. And at one time, they said that it was around a total of $12 million statewide. And I think they, apparently, they're looking at ways to cut back, and that might be one of the things they look at.
Well, there's some work that had happened on Friday. I'm just reading an update I had.
Go ahead.
And it was, there were some key legislators that met on Friday to tackle the education costs issues that are out there, which we all know are out there. And a couple of the things that they are discussing are small schools' grant and a reduction of the excess spending threshold, which could also really impact all of us if we sit here on the edge of that excess spending threshold. They're looking at negotiating statewide salaries and fringe benefits for not just staff, but for administrators as well, everyone else. So, there's a lot going on right now. This is just conversation that's happening that we're being told about, and I think we just need to be really aware of this because it's going to impact all of us. And we, you know, while we represent Leland and Gray, we all have, you know, our own school districts and our towns, and that will impact us as well. You know, if they're feeling it from the small schools' grant, we'll all be feeling it. So, just on the radar.
Yeah. It's tighten the belt times.
Well, I mean, you know, it's tightening the belt times everywhere right now, I guess.
Well, I think people are anxious about Medicare, medical health care, health benefits too, with shifting to a universal obligation to provide health care. And that may in fact affect us as employers of the paraprofessional group. It'd be interesting to see what happens, not immediately next year, but in the long term. Because the federal government is defining now full benefits for health care at 80 percent employment. That's a wrinkle I learned of this last week. So, you know, that's, and that's not a state issue. That's really just the federal issue regarding whether you have to, to what extent the employer having more than, I don't remember what it's 10 or something, but I think it's 50 from the federal.
It's 50 for.
50 employees needs to adhere to that, those requirements. And our present plan with our professional staff is pretty much the, what the new standard, they'll have a bronze, a silver, and a gold.
Right.
And it's pretty much equivalent to what in the, I keep calling it an agency pool, but it's not that. What is the pool called where they're, where people are going to get to buy their health plans?
Exchange?
Exchange, the exchange. Laura Sories from Visbit spoke to the superintendents last week and pointed out that basically that the contract you have with us, a JY or VIH program benefit is about what a gold plan would be in the, in the exchange. But all of them vary depending on their co-pays. And actually, all of our employees recently got a memo saying that their co-pays for doctor's visit has doubled from, you know, which is admittedly pretty small, $5 to $10 per visit, and that similar increases in the co-pays for prescriptions. And that's, that's just indicative of them trying to get to a more level, equal situation in terms of benefits within the exchange and with the private, or at least the pooled employee, employers like VIH.
This will impact us.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, there's an awful lot of unknowns, but more and more is.
Yeah. Learning more every day.
If you go into the Vermont Health Connect website, I think Vermont Health Connect, am I right? I think that's what it is. And you get into there and you start looking it over, and you click into some of the links. They still don't even have the information that you need yet all in there. But keep going because it's continuing to be updated all the time, and I've been following it, and I'm trying to follow it through Visbit as well. But it is going to be.
Well, it doesn't affect the health employee, like the state employees, including schools until 2017, so.
Yeah. We continue with our present.
You'll be guys are fine.
We continue with our present contractual applications, yeah. But actually, I do suspect that our contract which will.
It's a little earlier than that with some of the.
Well, the contract for our paraprofessionals, for example, support staff expires next year. And, you know, I think when, when the new contracts come out, and I know that people that are facing bargaining right now are really.
Well, it's long overdue.
They're recommending one. Well, they're no, I'm not, I'm not questioning that.
Having healthcare on a level playing field.
Yeah. I'm not questioning what we're going through, but I'm just saying, I think we all need to be aware of what's going on and how it will impact us, because it will.
You need to be planning ahead certainly for budgetary constraints.
Yeah. Absolutely. Okay. Any other questions for Frank or comments, feedback?
Thank you.
Hello?
Thank you.
Okay. You're good.
All right. All right. Back to you.
See you tomorrow morning. Okay. Thank you.
All right. My chair. Hi, everybody. We get to greet every single one of you. Apologize for the length of the report, but I actually haven't written a report in a couple of months, I realized. So.
We didn't feel that as much, remember, because we had one meeting where we didn't get a quorum, so.
Right.
So, didn't feel like that long for us, but we appreciate your reports always.
So, I'm going to be very brief because in about 15 minutes, Kevin Burke should arrive and present to us using the projector. I really would rather answer more of your questions and have more of a discussion because we're moving into a place that we haven't moved to before specifically about the numeracy intervention for grades seven through 10. It's pretty unusual to have a math intervention at a secondary level for regular education students. And when, in all the dozens of conversations I've had with teachers, parents, and especially students as to why they have been requested to participate in this 10-week intervention, it's really important that I say this is a regular education intervention so that they understand that it's not something else that will make them feel like they're, what should I say, targeted, but instead explaining to them that this is the first year that we are having Algebra I for all. So, if you didn't have it in eighth grade, you're having it in ninth grade. We eliminated the non-college prep track of algebra, and we have the academic support class alongside that for students who we, who have struggled in math or continue to. And yet, it's still not enough because you'll see on page two of the report, there's a pretty high failure rate as of January. It's a year-long course, meaning a period from the year. That, out of the 81 students participating, I hate to jump right to the bad news, but we're not accustomed to such a high failure rate for this college prep class since before, you know, last year at that, you know, halfway through the course, only one student was failing. And so, when I would explain to the students, looking at your course grade, looking at your teacher recommendation, who really has gotten to know you well mathematically, since most of them will have had that teacher all year. And the third is that we did a simple assessment, which was multiplication and division problems. And those factors combined determined which of, which students turned out to be about 30 were being selected to participate. And the students who, I mean, it's, I would say it's, it's been a, let's say, a rough start, but it's just all so new. You know, here I am, 16 years old, and I have to do math tutoring, and I'm in geometry. Okay, I have a low average, but I'm, I'll pass, or I'm just, but we see, and the story I tell them is when you get to Algebra II, you're going to hit the wall if you don't have these, the foundation set for you. And he, and the interventionist is using the methods of Mahasharma and other hand, the math consultant we've worked with and other real-life applications to understand what those parts of a whole mean. I mean, Stephen and I have been talking about this for, for the whole year, that the, just a very weak basis and not, and not being, not fluent in numeracy. So, but when they get to Algebra II, they can't move on. They can't, they can't pass, they can't function in the course. And so, I paint that picture, and I said, and that is the gateway course if you want to go to a university like UBM, you have to have Algebra II. So, I'm excited to see the number of students we have enrolled in Algebra I this year compared to last year. I specifically look at ninth grade because that's really a, no surprise, but a, like a kind of a gatekeeper year. Are you going to do the college prep track or the below-college prep track? And we have essentially eliminated that track by eliminating basic algebra. And I think I mentioned in here about, maybe not. So, what's going to happen with geometry? Because we have a hands-on geometry course called Discovering, and we have a college prep course called Euclidean Geometry. And so, what I've worked out with the math teachers is, in my view, very exciting, which is, because what they really need is a lot more math. And in order to do the college prep geometry, they have to understand the hands-on applications of it. So, roughly, I don't know, 50, 60 percent of the students doing Algebra I right now will go on to Euclidean Geometry next year, and then they can go on to Algebra II and pre-calc and the rest. But for students who, who are, whether they're struggling or algebra, I mean, generally because they're struggling in Algebra I, that they would, in the fall semester, they would go on to the Discovering Geometry course, and then in the spring semester, they go right into Euclidean Geometry. And then after that, in their junior year, they're in Algebra II. So, they really get a beefed-up sophomore year of math, so 87 minutes a day. So, I'm pretty excited about that. And the math teachers have talked about the curriculum adjustments they're going to need to make in the Discovering Geometry course so there'd be an easier bridge. But basically, but they're, they both address the same standards, one in a more hands-on way and the other in a linear theoretical way, abstract way. Any questions about math?
Well, I'll point out that this is not a solution without regard to the K through six.
Right.
You know, we're really inheriting here at the high school.
Exactly.
Middle school level, the, you know, we'll get by, you know, pass them on, you know, kind of approach to math. And I think we're learning through our consultant, I know we're learning through our consultant, that the precision of math language is very important, the meaning of math vocabulary is very important to be consistent, and that you have to, and you can well, hold all students accountable to achieving and meeting the non-negotiable standards if you have the self-discipline as an instructor not to be so accommodating regarding, oh, I know what you mean. You must understand it. I think you have a concept. And as a math teacher of both elementary, middle school, and high school, I appreciate that I was one of the sinners, you know? I mean, I had done that. But anyway, I'm very excited about the prospects, but what this approach. But anyway, I'm very excited about the prospects, but what this approach is recognizing at our middle school and high school level is that, you know, it's catch-up time and the intervention has to take place now because you can't afford to keep passing the students on or it's not serving the students well to do so, even though that has been the practice for many, many years. And when we were not so, shall I say, we were more resigned to a classic high school sifting out students and having twenty percent of them go to fine post-secondary schools and twenty percent more going to some other post-secondary education and otherwise going to the workplace, you know, we really have much higher expectations now.
Yeah.
And so, it requires, you know, a more strategic approach and greater investment. Now, we, you know, I would like to think, and I certainly predict, that if we're successful in the elementary grades and as effective as we aspire to be, that this kind of intervention or this extent of intervention will not, no longer be necessary because, you know, the, the list of non-negotiable expectations at each grade level is cumulative and won't lead kids in the lurch or being, you know, getting by but not really quite having the foundation to be able to proceed. And we're having tremendous response from the staff. It's about universal participation in the elementary school, on this, on these math courses. And that's tremendously heartening, they're, you know, encouraging because they're not obliged, I mean, these are not, you know, the teachers are not ordered to go to these. It's a high expectation on the part, but, you know, I understand what my limits are. So we have a very highly attended, Durin is, the principals are attending these courses with the staff. Durin has attended elementary level course, most of them are five, six, I forget which grade it was there. And I've been to all of them, I mean, all grade levels. I've seen the action from kindergarten through, through the high school. And it's, it's really gonna pull us all together, we just stay focused on it and keep, keep it rolling.
How do you bring parents into it though? That's.
Good question.
Well, I, I think that this will come. I hesitate to oblige, pressure the staff or the principals too much on presentation of that at this point until there is confidence and there actually is something to show for the effort. I mean, right now, the only thing we have to show is that we have a need, which we knew we knew we had a need before, and now we have a plan about what to do. But, you know, just, just thinking that.
I mean, you refer to that.
In the parent conferences, you know, parent conferences are where it would begin to be, you know, demonstrated or shown. And that's really where the rubber meets the road with the students, so.
I have a question. In the elementary schools, is there any thought, has there been any thought of moving away from the classroom teacher to subject teachers in fifth grade at least?
There is. Actually, our consultant does advocate for that position. In fact, statewide, at, in my other capacity as chairman of the standards board for licensure, there is some discussion, consideration of a math, math specialist license at the elementary school or at the upper elementary school. It is not, anyway, it's not, I have reservations about it from my own professional experience. I, I don't want that to be the, what's, let me step back. I've seen inclusion of special education in the classroom and special educators being hired in all our schools to meet students' needs. And what we're really trying to get back to is having those students really genuinely in the class and not have the classroom teacher say, well, that's the specialist job to deal with. And I would hate to see the departmentalization of the upper elementary, of the elementary schools, especially when we're so small, into, okay, that, you're the math person, so I don't have to worry about math anymore when I'm teaching my classes. And then you don't have any integration with the other classes with the math. And I think interdisciplinary instruction is really very important for the whole child development. So I'm just, I'm just sharing with my bias or my professional opinion about the matter. It doesn't mean it won't happen and it doesn't mean that we won't evolve there. We have a, when the central supervisor reunion math committee that is been appointed by me and it has, I listed in my previous report, they represented from the various schools, teachers, we have a teacher from every school, we have a teacher from every grade level, and we have, Durin attends that meeting as well as Laura Hazard, principal from Jamaica. And the, that committee is charged by me to oversee the professional development regarding math and, and the effects that it has as we, or the effort we make to transition to the Common Core standards. And they will be discussing that very issue, I'm quite sure.
Yeah.
And in fact, you know, the middle school model is that there is somebody who is the math, you know, highly qualified math subject teacher, but it's part of a team. That, that's the way they address the interdisciplinary approach. Sometimes they still get isolated from each other, but anyway, that's, now, the other issue about, just to get big political issue, when you talk about licensure, we can have very good intentions and then when we set a standard for a license and have a distinct license, then it gets all the more difficult for a principal and a superintendent to hire somebody to be qualified to teach that course or teach that, you know, that subject. And, and in small schools in Vermont, we have to have flexibility regarding, you know, wearing many hats.
It's like the level of content that we're talking about at the fifth and sixth grade level, you can still expect that the sixth-grade teacher to be able to have mastery of it. I mean, we're not talking pre-cal.
Hey, come on, sorry.
Sorry?
I teach first.
I'm not a first. But my, but my kid, I mean, I'm speaking, I, I had come from a small school background and we actually happen to have some, you know, pretty decent math.
It challenges a fair number of the parents. I'd say about fifty percent of the parents, the math, as it's taught now.
I'm not talking about parents, I'm talking about the teacher.
The methodology challenge, yeah, the teachers usually.
I'm talking about the teacher being able to have mastery, because all of a sudden you get into budget when you, when you start, starting about specialization. I mean, that's just beyond, beyond. What, what's our expectations?
Well, there's also, I mean, it leads us into another conversation that sort of came up at our red committee meeting because we're being challenged at the red committee to figure out how we're gonna address the issues that have come to us. And over and over, we've been hearing throughout, but it came up again at the last meeting, about what Leland Gray has more space and would, have we ever thought about expanding the middle school to include, you know?
Sixth grade.
Sixth grade or something like that. Because that's not an unusual, you know, breakdown, six, seven, eight for middle school. And so, you know, that would help address that to some extent possibly if that ever happened. I don't, there's, there was no movement on that for us at the red committee, but, you know, there's a lot of concern about that, but.
Well, I welcome the questions and the discussions.
I'm personally happy leaving this in the hands of professionals to weigh the pros and the cons. From, from the outside, I'm not an educator, from the outside, I can see some advantages.
Yeah.
You know, the transition from elementary to middle school will be much easier for students who are used to having three teachers in the course of the day, but I'm well aware of all the other ramifications, budgetary, staff, all that stuff.
It's, it's appropriate for board members to ask questions like that, honestly. And, and seriously, for us to have this kind of feedback, we all have our, we all come with our own experiences to this table and I mean, you know, it's perfect to have a fifth, sixth grade teacher here, doesn't it help us a lot to be able to address those things? There isn't a question that we shouldn't be asking or, or anything we shouldn't be questioning.
Okay, I'm gonna hold you two.
No, I'm serious. And if I ask, I'm happy about it.
We should not be leaving the discussion in any way. There should be an annual and a reflective process on what's the latest development, you know?
As long as we're staying in our roles.
What are the latest indicators?
Right? So I'll qualify it that way because you know how I feel about that, we must stay in our roles, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't be asking, how can we improve?
And I mean, I think from the seventh, my perspective is from the, I, you know, teaching five, six, I have a lot kind of dictated to me by the middle school. You know, they expect students to be able to be, you know, either here or here entering seventh grade, either in and out of the track or they're in the pre-odd track starting second grade. And we get about fifty percent starting out in seventh grade.
Wow.
Because we push, we have the same curriculum between our schools. So they all come with the same set of lessons, set of practice work, expectation for, you know, math is all about practice and time spent. And if you don't have consistency from all the, all the ascending schools with how much time they're spending a day.
Yeah.
Are they doing it every day? And as much as I hate the kind of pre-canned curriculum, it does give you the set of work. And like, like at my son's school, I know that they all work in school on math concepts. I also know that there's three teachers that teach math and they don't all give the same amount of practice work.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and that consistency of the practice work as homework, I really think should be dictated from middle school down to those five, six rooms to say, you know, you really need to have twenty minutes a night of math homework in sixth grade because how many minutes in seventh grade is it? You know, I mean, you need to have some repetitive practice work. I mean, I, I like the real-world application because it's really important for them to ground their understanding, but the, the consistency of coming in, having really mastered concepts through practice, through repetitive practice sadly, but I mean, it really is what works for math, is repetitive practice.
Yeah.
I mean, once you show mastery, move on, I get it, but, you know, I, I'm concerned just seeing from my perspective as a teacher and then as a parent at Newburgh, there's not enough, like, I'm sure there, I like the methodologies that I've heard about how it's taught, it's just a matter of how much are they being consistent, you know? And I think, you know, you want, you would rather have it consistent, consistently in at least a couple of certain places in seventh grade so you can match them to a class. And we've had to do a lot of work in our district on two, it's not easy.
Yeah, you mentioned two things that do need careful consideration, that is the homework, you know, the practices you said, and then the, and actually, there's probably, we're going to transition to more flipped classes, I'm sure you're aware of that regarding technology where the, where the actual lecture or the, the instruction happens more online at night, they secretly, and then the practice and the, and the actual application happens in, you know, in the day, in the classroom with the teacher. That's not, I mean, I'm, I'm sure that's, I'm not sure that's effective for all grade levels, but anyway, that is something that's also being discussed. And then the amount of time actually relates somewhat to your question too about the expert, you know, the more.
The math teacher expert.
Math teacher expert. The amount of time is another variable that we need to look at carefully. I mean, if we spend, you know, a hundred and fifty minutes a week on, on language arts in the typical elementary school week and we only spend a hundred on math, well, it's not surprising that we don't have, you know, some of the results that we would seek. But there's only so much time in the day for the student, so we have to, you know, we, it's, it's a matter of, of exploration and investigation and looking at the outcomes to see what, what informs us. Terrific.
I just want to reiterate, it's a pilot and we're studying it. We're gonna look at how the students do in their classes. I'd like to do some kind of survey of the students in terms of how was it? Do they feel stronger in their math skills? And it's a funding question also.
Yeah.
We just got lucky in, around the Title I money that became available that we weren't aware of before, so.
So have the students adapted to it? I mean, you mentioned how they didn't at first, the students, or the parents more had their reaction, like why, why isn't it doing?
I'd say, for the most part, parents are very, very supportive. And I actually have my own personal experience for my own children that I can tell, which helps them understand what happens in Algebra II. And so, looking out, you know, at the long range, students are more thinking about today and how fun is this? And luckily, the tutor has a wonderful personality and is a lot of fun. And so, I, the majority of students, they're going and then a few others have a meeting with me or they have a meeting with Melanie Swilinski and then I call a parent, you know, we, so we, we're, we work on it, but the vast majority are attending.
Cool. We beat math up? There's still some.
So I wrote about NEASC and our reaccreditation process very briefly. And if our IT staff member arrives, then we can show you this online database, which is fairly inexpensive, actually, just starting it for the rest of this year, we signed a contract, it's only like four hundred dollars because it's six dollars per student for the year and they've prorated it. The most exciting part of this right now with this tool is that last spring, all of the teachers filled out an online form, which became a big database of these, their course syllabus templates. And that is going to be uploaded into the Vermont comprehensive assessment tool. And then teachers this June can, I'm hoping, can get to their course and then link it to the other things that are in the database, like we'll be putting our writing genres in there, our writing rubrics in there. They, the, they can link it to Vermont standards and grade expectations and the Common Core is loaded in there also. And the, it is, it's basically, basically a very big database where teachers can then upload benchmark pieces. So you can get to like the particular assignment and say that science course for a lab and then you can see reassessment and then what makes a, you know, a top score, what makes a passing score. And there's a parent portal to this also, we're looking at, I'm not sure at this point we're going to be able to roll that out because we're developing right now the whole implementation plan. But the first thing is training a group of our staff and then those trainers, which will include everyone on the NEASC steering committee, will then be able to train the rest of the faculty to do the, I mean, it's not really data entry because we have the data with these course syllabi already will be uploaded in there. So then they can just link the other parts of it that belong. So, but imagine you as a parent can get into this portal and click on the four or five courses your high school student or your eight courses your middle school student is taking and based on that, you can see everything they're learning in that course, all the books they read, all the papers they write, what, what the scope of the year looks like. So, pretty excited about that.
I'd like to add one more thing on that. I'm particularly supportive of this. We're gonna, we're gonna try it here at Leland and Gray and then I, I hope that it will be expanded to include all the schools K through twelve. What this really does is empower the teacher to be able to look at outcome for their individual student over, over time, over years. So, for example, for our students here at Leland and Gray, Matt Martin is uploading the kneecap data on those students' performances back in, when in third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade. So, you know, we can really, this is, this is something that we tried to do. In fact, I presented in last August, our own analysis of longitudinal data that we tried to put together ourselves. But this is something that was started by Vermont educators. It is a local Vermont firm and so it really is getting very strong reviews from the users in Vermont. And since Vermont is dedicated towards a growth model, this, this particular tool really is much more, you know, supportive of that approach than what we do, what we get nationally or what we get from the kneecaps. I mean, I can't get a longitudinal student or even cohort group thing from the kneecap website. So I don't know whether you're, is your SU involved with this particular thing?
No, I haven't heard of it.
Yeah, I, somebody, Windsor or somebody is out there. I've heard very positive reviews from other superintendents. So we're pretty excited about this. We'll see, it certainly is cost-effective, at least at the present, present rate. And we expect that if it isn't useful for our teachers as a formative tool to reform instruction, then of course we won't sustain it, but we certainly are optimistic.
What is it called?
It, it reminds me of the Vermont Kids Against Tobacco, VCAT, but that's, that's VKAT.
Vermont Common Assessment Tool.
This is Vermont Common Assessment Tool, but don't get it associated with the State Department of Education, Agency of Education. It's really, it's a, it is a private concern.
They're not affiliated with it, they're just a private company.
Right, yeah.
It's like stimulating data.
It was, it's, it's aggregating data.
In a pretty long piece of format.
And many different sources. I mean, the sources that we use, you know, the DRA or the, well, she listed it over here.
That's what causes Vermont Comprehensive.
That's what causes Vermont Comprehensive Assessment here. And this one's Vermont Common, so I don't.
Oh.
It's comprehensive, I may have made a mistake because I'm so used to saying common or something.
Yeah, Common Core is different than.
Yeah. Twenty-five percent of
Comprehensive.
Supervisory unions in Vermont use VCAT. And we are the only high school rather than a whole SU. So I appreciate Stephen's.
Yeah, I just discussed with the leadership team.
Trying to expand it at some point.
They'll have to fill us in on here.
So would this be giving you data where you could have like groups and not just individuals, but groups longitudinally? You know, to be able to look at, or, you know, for you, for you to pull information for us or to look at growth of a group and not just an individual?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yes, it has these.
So you won't have to make many charts and you'll make them for you.
That's right, that's right.
Good use of your time.
Before I jump into the next part, I just wanted to make, say two things that are not part of the principal's report. One is that I would like to inform you that a French trip is being planned, going to France in April 2014. It was not something I shared before, but they had a preliminary meeting and a student showed up, so they're going.
Oh, good.
Cool. And, you know, it's a year from now, but they're very excited. And the other thing is that the master schedule is done. It's never been done this early.
I'm sorry to be the last, but I can't, I can't even believe it.
Rains a little.
It's, it's, it's done. And students are, since April first, students have been meeting with their school counselors and finalizing the schedule and they actually get a copy of their schedule.
Wow.
It's not a listing of course requests.
They have their copy?
That's the first time ever.
It's for the month of April, they will be meeting with every student.
They've gone into school without a schedule before.
After the vacation.
That's phenomenal.
No, they started April first.
Oh, they've been.
Yes, they've been meeting with every student and they, I mean, most students had put in their course requests electronically. And so now they're finalizing it, saying, okay, there's a hole here, there's a hole there. What course are you going to take?
Wow.
Now, this is the problem of a long-term investment by you as a board in technology and infrastructure to get it to happen. It's, actually, I regret to say it was a goal of mine in nineteen ninety-nine when I first came here, but, you know, been a long time coming.
Been on the radar screen as long as I've been here.
So how's the context going? I'm just curious if I can ask that question.
Well, there won't be any.
Are there any? I love that.
We've reached Valhalla, you know.
You love the optimism, well, you know, sometimes you just gotta go for the.
I think there's more reason to be optimistic this year than the three preceding years. So for next year, I should say. With the band chorus conflict during B block, most required courses for, you know, like geometry tenth graders, bio tenth graders, have been moved to other blocks of the day. It doesn't, doesn't, it's not a, you know,
Eliminate everything.
Eliminate everything, but it's the best it's been since my short tenure here. And I have to congratulate Peter Golrick and Melanie Swilinski.
Yeah.
They started working on this in September and they've, and they've met every week to make this happen and have created new processes in order to get this information. For example, students going online to Power School and making course requests themselves rather than a meeting here and then another meeting there and then the final schedule's going out in June. No.
And it's all input, the students are inputting, it's all there.
And you're getting a fair number of responses from the students?
No complaints. So, but no student has come to, I mean, I see the students crowding around the school counselors offices so that, you know, they have their appointments and basically they're booked, Sarah and Melanie, for, for the month of April, just doing this work. I mean, they have other work to do too, but, yes. So I, usually I hear complaints, so, but I've heard just kids happily waiting to find out what.
Well, congratulations.
It's phenomenal. But I, I have to emphasize the investment in the personnel, the time allotment, the vision, the, the building in new processes. We have the same technology all, all this time. It's a matter of the, the people figuring out how to use it best.
Yeah, that's true.
We have made some good investments with, I know, at Peter Golrick and others. It's great. Thank you for us here. You've got to request.
Yes, I do. It's very lengthy in my explanation.
Does everybody read that still?
I don't know how much detail you want me to go into this. When I spoke with a couple of other schools about their NEASC process, they had set aside, whether it was five half-days or five full-days, they built it into their, the schedule for the year of teachers of additional time devoted specifically to NEASC. Otherwise, they would have to turn all their professional development, all their teacher meetings in-service days that were, you know, usually available to just NEASC and no other professional development goes on. And I am concerned about that prospect because I don't want to slow the progress we've made in literacy, but also now with mathematics. And that is the, the first reason why I'm requesting, although I think I list it last, but it, for me, in my mind, is we've got to get them started in this because next year, they're going to be really looking at revising their information. When they be able to, when they're able to look and see, okay, I teach ninth grade social studies, here are the technical and social science, reading and writing standards from the Common Core. I have to be doing this. It's a further push in a very official way. Plus the two other areas about them needing, I mean, that would be the place for them to revise their curriculum in that database as well as their own lesson plans. I mean, they want to go down to that level. And the third area that we need, need to make a significant effort in systematically seven-twelve teaching vocabulary. Because what we, we did an analysis in early March of our students' responses on the kneecap test and a lot of it had to do with vocabulary. And what we find is they don't learn this at home and if they don't learn it directly from us, if they see a word that they're unfamiliar with, they have no tools to figure out what that word means.
Except the computers, I mean, they just like all the time.
Not on a kneecap test, not on the SAT test.
I'm saying, I'm in general though, to learn like words, like.
But right, but, right, but that would come from a student's own initiative. Like, I wonder what mono is, I wonder what bio is.
But that does not happen?
No, not in a systematic approach. It's starting somewhat with the Fanta-Sompanel in the elementary school. But we need to be directly instructing this in the middle and high school. So that is a lot of work to lay out and Linda Rude and, no, she has a big task ahead of her. And if you don't know this, since Linda is retiring in June, we already have our next literacy coach lined up and that's our eighth grade and also teaches tenth grade English teacher Courtney Karan.
Great. Good, because that's an important position, it sounds like.
Extremely.
Any number, okay.
So is that, is that a piece that could get integrated into the different subject areas?
Of course, certainly in science and.
Inside.
Every subject area, every subject area.
Because you're incorporating language arts as it is.
That's right.
Would become core.
That's right, teaching writing, teaching reading and, and now teaching vocabulary. So kind of one year at a time. Yes.
My thoughts on this whole thing, you know, is if the time is not being used well, like if, if the students, it's just impossible to get them to do much after the finals have happened and graduation has happened. And it would be like sticking with your budget and this amount is allotted for this amount of money, for this, for this line item, but we don't really need that line item anymore, so we can't use it for something else. It's, you know, it just, just because it's there and it's supposed to be this, but if it can be better used for something else, then it makes sense to me to do that. Just to stick with something because that's what we're supposed to do. I don't see the sense in myself.
Well, I think that, Dorin and I are certainly sensitive to the issue and anxious eager to hear from the board any questions or reservations you may have about this recommendation. It is a matter of using the contract or employing the master agreement in a way that I think best serves our children, our students for the future. But it can be questioned by some people, especially those who, who view a teacher's work as being with the student directly and not recognizing the importance of the professional development in service time to in fact have a greater positive impact on the student's learning.
And the timing of the year for professional development, I mean, is that really the most optimal time? I, I guess I'm, I'm thinking about graduation, how it seems to always drive our decision about this and is there a reason for us to not talk about that? And I, I just want to make sure, I, I'm, you know, how I am, I'm totally in support of professional development, whatever way we can, because I do think it directly benefits our students. But is this the best time for us to be engaging in?
Well, we have, we have five days in our master agreement.
Right, I know.
Usually we have two of them at the beginning of the year. We have one of them at, at the semester break and we have one at the end of the year. And then we have one someplace in the fall there. I forgot, we used, I forgot what day that happened, but we, we have one in the fall and it used to be in October, but it's moved to November. But anyway, we, we, it is true that you would prefer to invest the time in service at the beginning of the year, towards the beginning of the year, if you had everything, you know, if you had, if you had all the levers, you had all the control. But you can't get by with not having something at the end of the year. This is an extension or expansion of that time based on the, based on what the calendar falls this year and our snow days. I mean, it's, let's face it, if we were, if we were ending the last day of student instruction Friday before graduation, you know, we probably wouldn't be having this proposal. I mean, we might be forced into something, but it is.
Quite a bit recently.
It has, I mean, quite often we've had a Monday or a Tuesday after graduation and, and the attendance has been poor.
We know that and it's not.
Despite Dorin's good efforts, you know, the, the heart is no longer in the harness or, you know, there's not the willingness to pull.
Well, I mean, the numbers here prove the question. It's not a problem, I mean, we're not benefiting our students when we have this.
Now, of course, if we see these kind of attendance rates happening, you know, just before graduation, that's not a very good sign. I mean, we're going to be watching that in terms of finishing up the year properly. But I, I do think it happens to fall in a way that's advantageous and, and meets the concerns as Dorin has articulated here, combining the NEASC with, without having the NEASC suck all the air out of professional development, so we no longer have an emphasis on the vocabulary, on the reading, on, right across the curriculum and the math.
So, so I'll just say, because you're the administrator who probably will be dealing with this more and more, the, the discussion that's ongoing at all times, at all levels about our school calendar and whether, there's a lot of discussion around, you know, some, about, about doing year-round schooling, you know, the.
Wait, wait until my part of the report.
Right, three or four weeks on, two weeks off, that kind of, you know, whatever the schedule becomes. And there has been some real, actually concrete examples of where, they still have the summer.
I'll give you one later on here tonight.
Yeah, so I mean, there may be other ways to discuss this.
Related to that, has there been any more discussion about shifting the school day by an hour, starting an hour later?
Yes.
Good question, because we need to be.
There, there has been discussion about it. I don't think we're going to be able to pull it off for, for the fall.
Because of the schedule?
Well, we, the finances are, are difficult for our sending schools.
It's not for us.
And what hap, yeah, it has, it has an effect particularly in Wardsboro.
Wardsboro.
Because they're so spread out. And it's, it, it would work, I mean, the administrative team has actually, I've put on Google Docs a place where the principals can put down the pros and the cons regarding this, this idea. I, I will, I, I certainly continue to advocate for it strongly. But I know that I can't leave where the Indians won't go.
So what's the problem with Wardsboro, I'm not, not sure.
The problem is that.
Got that, but what, where, logistically, mechanically, what's going on?
Well, right now, we, we run the buses, the, the convenience of the afternoon with multiple runs is shifted to the convenience or inconvenience of the multiple runs in the morning. It isn't as efficient in the morning. And that's a particular issue with Wardsboro. I tell you, Wyndham doesn't have any problem with this. Marlborough doesn't have any problem with this, Dover doesn't have any problem with this. But, you know, Wardsboro, because of its geographic location, has an east to west and, and.
Right, just spread out.
This way it's located. But it's not insurmountable, but it would be a shock for some parents to find there and the arguments continue about, well, why then sports is too late? You know, kids are missing class because, you know, the, the last period class ends up later. If we go, if we went forty-five minutes later, last period class is going to end instead of two-thirty, it's going to end at three, three-fifteen, three-fifteen. Okay, so then when do we start the sports? Now, I just heard on the radio with Brattleboro that they, you know, they're starting their games, baseball game is starting at five o'clock rather than four-thirty. And, you know, they got lights.
I appreciate all the difficulties, thinking about the earlier issue. But I, I understand that not, since there has been enough time, it's gone by since schools have started doing this, they are being able to measure increases in SAT scores.
Right.
Based on that. So that's a very compelling pro.
Not only that, but they, in Brattleboro, they have fewer tardies, they have better attendance and they have fewer failures of course at the high school.
Well, I mean, we need to be taking this seriously, Ben.
Well, then this board needs to direct this superintendent to put it to the other boards.
Well, well, I mean, we, I, I, this board was, I think unanimously in support of making that move. It was really other school districts who gave us the feedback, said it wasn't going to happen and then you came to us and said you couldn't make it happen last year, but you did come back and said you were going to do it the following year. And now this is the first time since Baum and Asked, this is the first time we've heard it wasn't going to happen, so.
Well, I'd appreciate you shaking, shaking stick a little bit. I mean.
Have we just shaken?
A motion by, a motion by this board to, to enable or at least explore seriously the prospects of doing that, of planning ahead for that is, is something that I would appreciate. Because basically for most people, when you talk about changing the schedule from parents or teachers and so forth, people say, I don't know, why, why are we doing this? You know, it's inconvenient for me.
But we're thinking about the kids.
I would encourage you to speak with members in the community, parents, students.
Well, so, okay, speaking for students and parents like that I know and, and on my own observation, they just do so much better if they got that extra hour in the morning. It's just amazing, the difference in what I have seen. So, they just seem to function later in the day, much, they just, that their whole, their whole like regime is more towards the later part of the day rather than early in the day, so.
I mean, these kids, they have to travel so far.
I would, I would definitely be in favor of a motion to support a later start date.
Time, a daily time.
Sorry?
Later starting time of the day.
Yeah.
Yeah, you said a date.
Oh, sorry. A later, a later time, yeah, later start time, yeah.
So you got a move?
You can make a motion to.
So a motion to encourage the superintendent to explore the idea of a later start time to the school day.
And let's have a date about when you're going to have feedback on that so that there's some pressure for you to.
Next meeting.
Fine. We'll have a report back at our next meeting.
To report back at our next meeting.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So we'll get to the motion. Okay, bum, second to the, you got that down?
I think so.
Do you want to read that?
Well, I don't have the wording exactly what Jeremy said, but it went from the earlier.
Yeah, let's make sure.
So I said, a motion by the board to encourage superintendent to seriously explore the prospect of moving ahead, of shifting the start time of the school day later. I can, I can tweak what.
To report back next month, right?
Yeah, and report.
And report back to the board at our next.
Next meeting.
When it's found out.
I'll be able to summarize the obstacles and the arguments and we'll see where we're at.
Exactly.
And part of that could be the, the feedback from Wyndham Southeast who are doing it now.
Yes, yes.
Because that sounds like they've had some positive, that that was a challenge with the games and I understand that, but I'm.
I have, yeah, I have, anyway, I had some things in mind regarding that resource, yeah.
Okay, any other comments or questions on the motion before we vote? If not, if you're ready to vote, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, abstentions? Okay, motion passes, thank you.
And what about the other issue, is there any objection to the, you should probably make that motion about the days?
I make a motion that we.
Move to accept the recommendation. Move to accept the recommendation of changing the three days following commencement from student instruction to teacher in-service.
Yes, that's exactly what I'm saying.
How you doing?
I almost add to that, that that should be a policy, because it seems...
Well, let's hold on one minute.
All right, but at least that should be considered, because it seems...
An accepted, an accepted procedure.
I'd like to see it now be an issue.
Exactly, yeah.
But I'm saying, yeah, I think the way we need to do it is to try to address it from the, maybe from a different angle.
So the motion was to accept the recommendation of changing the three days following commencement from student instruction days to teacher in-service days.
Exactly.
When graduation, yeah.
Then, I think you need to be clear there, the three days following...
Graduation.
Graduation.
Three days following commencement.
Yeah, good.
So, could you just add administrative recommendation?
Yes, that's true.
To the board, recommendation, thank you.
So it's a 17, thank you.
So, to accept the administrative recommendation of changing the three days following commencement from student instruction days to teacher in-service days.
That sounds perfect, does that make sense? And Bruce, second to the?
Is that June 17th through 19th?
Yep.
Yeah.
I think we still have another day after that.
The regular schedule.
Regular in-service, is that...
I think that includes it, but we'll check.
We'll check.
Yeah, okay. Okay, if you're ready to vote, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Okay, motion passes.
We thank you very much.
Thank you.
Definitely. And, Durin, if I can just, if you don't mind, that was a great way to explain it. It was very helpful in your report, made it much easier for me to grasp it.
Listen, I was bringing you...
This is what we're using for.
Try to prepare you for success, Eric.
Well done. Anything else in your report?
Yeah, I don't, right, teacher to teacher, well, we'll have to make it, break it out, make it deep. I want to talk briefly about two other items, and one is very short, but the, this whole child's committee that is underway, and I would love to get a feeling from the board as to what your perspective is on this work. It was, I'll say, quite a pilgrimage to go visit Mount Anthony Union in Bennington and see the facility that they have of several offices, a rec room, a professional kitchen, and a doctor's office with a dental chair in that, and that the nurse is the, is the gatekeeper to those other health or dental services. And the shift in the mentality among the teachers to be looking for what the students need. Another example of that is, they have two huge closets in this facility, and I said, what are those? And they said, they're basically wardrobes, full of clothes and shoes and jackets, and teachers will notice if a kid is wearing the same clothes every day. And we noticed that here, too. And I even had a, suggested, and we did this, we had a 15-minute faculty-wide dialogue yesterday at our faculty meeting about what do we see of our most pressing needs of our students. And immediately, they got to, well, what are we going to do about it? What are we going to do about it? They don't want to just talk about, oh, we see this and we see that. And I thought we were just doing a little focus group, but without the, at least curiosity of the board, I'm afraid to take any step further, because we do have a committee, and in some ways, we already do address this, if we become aware of a homeless student, and certainly, if we become aware of a student who's eligible for free or reduced meals. We have the forms for students to sign, or parents to sign up for Dr. Dinosaur Medicaid. So we do a little bit of this, but not nearly to the extent that Mount Anthony does, and the possibilities in what Governor Shumlin has described for Vermont schools in becoming these full-service schools. That doesn't mean we would...
But does he want to fund it?
Well, it doesn't, I should say, it doesn't necessarily mean we're going to build anything, because we have facilities on our block. Yeah. But the relationships and the partnerships that are developed. And at MAU, they got money through Bernie Sanders to build what they have there, as well as at Molly Stark Elementary School.
I'm sure we can totally use it.
Are there other SUs doing something besides Southwest Supervisory Union, around the state?
I don't know the answer.
I'm not aware, but I imagine all the, you know, at least some of the larger centers. Bennington's had quite a need for a long time, so it's not surprising that they have the most well-developed facilities. I mean, 20 years ago, I visited a school in Springfield that had this, you know, going, it was a middle school, actually, had this going. But I do know that there's a need, and I think that, Durin, I'd just like to make sure that the board's aware that there's a committee exploring this, we will do whatever we can within the means that we have, and we just want to be sure that the community that you represent, the communities you represent, are supportive, and that we're not causing some concern about, you know, taking over something that should be the family's responsibility and so forth.
So what are you talking about, I mean, like, doctors, like, Mount Anthony has, in addition, is a dentist you just mentioned, and...
This is Doctor Don Higginson, School-Based Clinician, Social Worker, Substance Counselor.
For their mental health counseling, we have the exact same staff makeup, even the school social worker, they have an equivalent, in addition to the school-based clinician and school counselors. So we're really good that way. But what they have is a doctor who comes, like, an afternoon a week, and it's the nurse who makes the appointments for the doctor.
The school nurse.
The school nurse, yep. And then they have, I think it's just a hygienist, who comes to do cleanings and referrals out to dentists. And that's much more common in Vermont at the elementary level, of cleanings and someone go around with a portable chair, but it's pretty different in terms of referrals for teenagers' teeth compared to, you know, a third grader.
Are parents okay with this, are the parents in Bennington, do they...
I think they're dependent on this, I mean, it's a serving, it's a segment of the population that really doesn't...
So this is serving a segment of the population that's outside of, say, the benefits that they wouldn't be eligible for, in other words, like a doctor dentist?
Some don't have insurance, the majority do, vast majority.
Have Dr. Dinosaur?
Yep, that is who take advantage.
Right. So therefore, those services are available, but they're not necessarily taking advantage of it.
Or the situation may be not as critical for them to go see a practitioner, a doctor or dentist.
Well, when you have two parents who are working full-time and don't get home until after doctor's appointments are over, sometimes it's impossible to get your child unless you have another support system out there to take your child to visit a doctor or a dentist, and that happens. I mean, you know, it's just so unfortunate today, that, you know, you can't have one stay-at-home parent anymore, or it's rare to see that. I mean, people are very fortunate to have that, you know, if they are able, you know, we're living in a different time.
So, you know, you go and seek professional help when, you know, it's really bad.
It's too late, no preventative care.
There's no preventive care.
Yeah.
I think it's a wonderful idea, I think it's absolutely terrific.
And that's how we keep costs down.
The only...
That's right.
To be preventative.
When you talked about talking to our communities and all that kind of stuff, I don't know about you guys, but I get feedback fairly regularly, not just, not specifically my community, but you hear it as a school board member, that now, schools are taking over, you know, schools have to do everything for families, because families aren't, they either don't have the support, they don't have the interest, they don't have whatever to be able to do that. So that is probably some of the pushback we'll feel, I think, from that, if we take this on. I mean, there's a lot of people who feel like schools should be just there for academic support. We, it is incumbent upon us to make sure that everybody understands what's critical for us as a school and as a school board is to support our students' education and health and all of those, whether they're hungry or not, that impacts their education. There's no question, and they're coming to us in such greater need today than they ever were, it's unbelievable. So I'm going to go out on a limb and say, kind of like you did, Bum, and if we can help in any way, you know, we can't take away our academic supports, but if we can support them by doing something...
In the end, it contributes to the academics and the quality...
Sure, I sure hope so.
And the ability of these kids to pay attention to that, and not their teeth, and not, you know, I just think it...
Just like free and reduced lunches.
The service that you're talking about providing is setting up appointments? Is that what it would be?
So I'm looking at this as a two-year process. First, we have to determine our level of need and what that need is specifically, and we have, we have to review the data we have based on the health information forms that students hand in, which says how, you know, if they see a dentist, when was the last time they went to the doctor, and then we have a population who don't hand in the forms at all. And we have minimal information about their medical history and have been unable to get that information. So it's sort of, what do we know and what do we don't know, so that's the next step, to be aggressive in getting that information, I hate to use that word, aggressive, but we'd have to be extremely strategic, potentially even home visits, to get that information. And the focus group with the teachers was one other way of collecting data. Grace Cottage just produced a report that included Brattleboro Memorial Hospital, where it showed things like, we are underrepresented for dental services, and we have, but we have more need than the state average. The same is true for mental health services. And so we have more information coming, and I, so I think of this as, we have to analyze, we have to write a concept, analyze the data, which is going to take months to do, to gather it all together, and then list our priorities, what's our greatest need, so that's what we have to target first. However, because Shumlin is talking about this, and because Sue McGuire, the principal at MAU, actually mentioned to Doug Racine, I can't believe I'm saying this on television, delete that part. She mentioned Leland and Gray to someone who is in the position of government, who is interested in the, in developing more of the whole service, of full-service schools. So if we were in a position to apply for a grant for half a million, or whatever it would be, but I think what's most important is to work with our partnerships, as I wrote in here, that I have made already established these conversations, but I don't think our need is going to, I think our need is going to be more than what they can serve. So if funding becomes available, I'll have that data in two weeks. I mean, I would just have to...
The reality of this is, unfortunately, is that there isn't funding, and like I said, we're going to have, the Governor Shumlin and the state legislature and the federal government are going to have to be very strategic in the way that they are setting up their budgets to be able to fund additional programs like this. But no question, you know, this is critically important, and it fits right in with Governor Shumlin's agenda that he has, you know, and even the health piece. I mean, if we start bringing up our children to see a doctor and, you know, do that preventative care, we're going to be a healthier society, there's no question.
And with those contacts with the healthcare professionals, it just, I just think kids will possibly live healthier and make healthier choices, because they will have a professional person who's talking to them about their choices. And it just, it starts the, the education and the prevention, as opposed where it's important, instead of they end up in jail for doing drugs, when if you had a health question, they'd be talking to them instead of...
His budget's getting torn apart.
Or something, you know.
Well, I'd be interested to see how this evolves, but I do think that we have an opportunity here because of our location with Grace Cottage and neighboring dentist practice, and our smallness works in our favor in terms of trying to do something and fund it, as opposed to having, you know, 1,500 kids and trying to take care of all of them.
We take advantage of what we have.
So, you know, I think we should proceed with all due care, but...
Is everybody, everybody support?
Yeah, I just want to add one point.
Go ahead.
You know, it does fall under the academics, though, or the responsibility of a school to, you know, raise a responsible citizen, and that, you know, these are families that are not teaching their kids that regular dental and doctor visits are important.
That's right.
And they are not getting the skill or the practice in doing that work. And so if they're 16, 17 years old, and in a couple of years, they are, you know, adults out there in the world, giving them, teaching that skill, having set the appointments up, seeing those professionals, if their family's not helping to make those appointments, that's a great learning.
It is.
You know, that's independence, that's getting them out and trying to break that cycle of, you know, emergency room care only, kind of, and so I think it's really, I think it's really easy to rationalize, putting under the umbrella, you know, a good graduate should be able to do this.
But it's not like the school to set up the appointments, correct?
I don't have the answer to that right now. I know that at MAU, the school sets up the appointments, and that Bellows Falls, they'll drive the kids to the appointments, to doctors and dentists.
Yeah, well, that, I think that's where the breakdown must be, in part.
Transportation.
Right, which you might have covered, because it's all walked down.
Right here.
Yeah.
It's really handy to it, so...
I mean, just the, the shift that has been for me, that, you know, when I was a teenager, braces were a burden, now I see they're luxury.
Yes.
And now that I've been here for three years, and I've gotten to know a lot of students very well, I've also, unfortunately, been able to watch the teeth rot in front of my eyes over the three-year period. And so each one of us on the committee has a different angle of what they're particularly passionate about. And I never thought it'd be dental for me, but, but, I mean...
Pretty important.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Well, it sounds like you have support.
The idea of clothes, that business of having a closet full of clothes, I mean, you go, there's a lot of organizations that have dressed for success, so, great.
Yeah. And for so many of our students, Leland and Gray is it. There's, this is their, their education, their co-curricular, their social service agency, their food, three meals a day at this point, well, after school's not, it's not a meal, but, so...
Just like it is in other schools.
Yes, yeah, around the country. I appreciate the support.
Appreciate the initiative.
Yeah, absolutely.
Digging deeper.
Yeah.
And with all the huffle about school choice, the numbers have hardly changed at all compared to our current year. So I just thought you'd want to have a follow-up from that. So we didn't get 24 students hoping to come to Leland and Gray.
But we didn't lose.
It was a one, it was a one difference, wasn't it? Yeah, we'll have 11, we expect 11 next year compared to 10 this year, and then we lose two more next year. I mean, I expect, we haven't heard back from the receiving schools if those students have been accepted.
Journey East is happening next year.
Yes.
Do you know what the out-of-district students' numbers are?
For next year? I don't. We have two this year. I, gosh, did I even talk about Jessica Rehman Schneider's visit to China?
Yeah, you did, but make sure we know what the question is.
I'm sorry.
We don't know how many...
The students who will be participating in Journey East next year who are not at Leland and Gray.
That's what I, that was my guess, too.
I haven't seen Tom in months, I was wondering if...
Smaller.
Is, yeah, is Journey East drawing them in from other...
So Brattleboro Union will now no longer pay their tuition for the semester? So that's the biggest blow.
Well, this, so that brings up the topic politically, of our funding system being based on student heads. And unless we have the courage to fund our educational system based on program and opportunity for learning, rather than where the head count is, we're going to continue to have this kind of disappointment.
Yeah, we will, yeah. Okay, any other questions here, Durin?
Is that discussion anywhere other than right here, just this last couple of minutes? Is it up in my field at all about head counts?
Well, I think it is a little bit. What's going to bring it to bear is the requirement to support the career centers. Because the career centers are basically in competition with the other high schools, small schools for students. And the law certainly, as you can tell from the calendar, you know, our school-wide calendar, you know, school calendar for the year is based upon supporting and is somewhat dictated by the career centers, idea of what a calendar should be like for the school year, because we can't have something that's contradictory to that calendar. So, you know, the state is trying to provide that kind of opportunity, but unless we fund it based on a region and not based on the number of students going there, we will constantly be in conflict. We will have a mixed message for students. Yeah, we want you to stay here, but we want you to get the opportunity to go to the career center. I mean, if we had thirty more students go to the career center, what does that do to your income here, Leland and Gray? It's not good. So, you know, that's, it's going to become increasingly apparent to the legislators as they look at the general education funding budget. And the other issue that's politically hot is how much of that money is gonna go out to independent schools? Because there is no cost efficiency on money going out to independent schools. But I can be clear, if somebody has a choice and they send a child to a public school, if you have ten kids in a class, that's cost about the same as if you have five kids in the class. But when we tuition them out to independent schools, you have ten kids you're sending, it costs twice as much as five kids you're sending. I'm full of good news today.
Yeah, you are. Let's get a bio.
We don't blame, we don't hold it against you or anything, no.
You mentioned the calendar, you sent out the calendar for the supervisory union for next school year.
Yes.
Graduation two thousand fourteen is on June twenty-first. So, I have a daughter graduating here on June twenty-first and another one in Michigan on June twenty-first.
Oh.
Yeah, thanks.
Oh.
That kind of thing.
That's really late for a college grad.
They're on a trimester.
Yeah, they have to be.
So, we're gonna have to flip a coin with you, how it gets to go.
I always thought, though, the graduation year was on the second Saturday. Is that the second Saturday?
Third.
It's always, but this year, is that third? It's always, okay.
I hate to say, I have the calendar to look at, so I'll pass it on.
No, it's on the fifteenth, is that the third Saturday?
Now, I was entering it in my Google Calendar, but, oh, dear.
Is it always been the third?
He's got some time to think about it.
Yeah, I know. I get to ask them, okay, if you want mom or dad.
They set the calendar.
I thought it was sort of set in stone, what it was, second Saturday.
Well, it's coordinated with the other, the other schools. We try to make it all in the same weekend, so that it's, geez, if I can rehearse this, I don't think I got it right. But Bellows Falls is on Friday, and Bellows is on Thursday, and we're on Saturday morning, and Rattleboro's Saturday night, and, you know, because everybody's cousin and everybody wants to come together for the-.
Yeah.
So, I'm, my regrets, you know? But on the other hand, my compliments on having two daughters.
That was a lot of help, wasn't it, Bomman? I know what you're hanging for right there.
Looks like parents might not be able to be together.
Yeah.
Maybe one's gonna go to one, someone else go to another. Okay, anything else for Durin? Anything else from you, Durin?
I hope not.
Okay, we're gonna move on and just-
Move the hour.
Yeah.
I certainly do compliment the board and commend you all for the engagement in these very important issues regarding Leland and Gray and destruction here in our schools. So, I just don't wanna detract from it at all. And, you know, making comment about the late hour, it really is a compliment to you all, to your interest and attention to the best we can do for our students.
But I think Bomman's comment was really critical here, and that is that, you know, if it weren't for the administration bringing it to us and engaging us in this kind of conversation, it would be harder for us to know, you know, where our efforts need to be. And so, we're all in line for it. Thank you for being on top of us and bringing it to us.
Okay, so I put out a report, and certainly, I'm not gonna go through it in detail as Durin did. I just welcome your questions, if there are any. I did receive feedback on one issue that I commented on, and that was about enrollment in the elementary schools of Leland and Gray, and student enrollment. And I do wanna correct a representation that it's rather flat. Dover has increased in the past three years, and they probably will, they believe they'll have, just talked with Bill Anton today about clarifying this. You know, they may be exceeding a hundred, maybe up to a hundred and four or something in four years. And that's partially attributed to their move to a three-year-old program. One of the reasons why their numbers have gone up is if at least six to eight of those are really additional three-year-olds in the school. And so, I wanna make sure that we recognize that difference. I haven't received feedback from Marlboro yet. They may too be optimistic, more optimistic about what will happen in the future. But, you know, Board's Brown, Jamaica are gonna hold just about the same. Townsend will be in the eighties, as I said. So, we, that's why our projection for Leland and Gray is that we are gonna be in good shape enrollment, you know, in terms of next year.
So, if this state can keep focusing on jobs and making sure that we have employment for people, we may have reached, at least at our elementary level, the bottom.
That's certainly, certainly possible. But there really just aren't that many, yeah. So, anyway, that's, any other questions on my report?
Yeah, we've got one here.
Good.
I wasn't quite sure what you meant when, number five. I also attended a senate education committee.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm a little bit vague about that, yes. Politically discreet. So, what's happening here is, I was at the State House lobbying about early ed, and I happened to spend the afternoon, or at least an hour in the afternoon, at the senate ed committee, and I did observe, and I was tipped off that this was going to be considered, a bill that was going to require from the independent schools the same-
S ninety-one.
Requirements, is that what it's called? I never remember the number, that's why I didn't put it down, I didn't wanna misspeak. Anyway, independent schools, for example, could be required to take the NECA exams, to employ licensed teachers, to provide for all students of special needs.
If you, if a third of your student body is coming from public-
Coming from public, public district tuition.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, it's not, it's not gonna kill, it was designed so that it didn't really hurt small places like Stratton, Academy, or, you know, little ones. This is, if you really have a major group of your students coming in, and at least a third of your funds are coming out of public funds.
Yeah, I used the word independent first and put it, for instance, private. I mean, there's some confusion about that. An independent school in Vermont is really a specific class of school, like St. John'sbury and Academy and so forth. There are private schools that are independent, but they're not entirely private. They're actually designated, they're part of the public, originally part of the public town school. So, anyway, that's, so what's happened is the committee backed off from actually pursuing that bill, voting on it.
Doing a summer study.
And instead, doing a summer study. And I don't, I wasn't there long enough, nor do I, can't guarantee that that's what's gonna be voted on in the end. But that is the senate ed committee's intention, because they wanna take the issue up again next half of the biennium and make sure they're basing their bill and their requirements on facts that they've gotten from this study committee. So, while I was there, they were debating the size of the committee, trying to make it smaller so it'd be more effective, but make sure it's inclusive. Typical political considerations. But this room was packed. It was a room smaller, about the size of that computer room.
The committee was terrible.
And I had to stand the whole time because there's just no space for the senate committee. But, you know, they're only five members of the committee. They're only five members of the committee, but there were a lot of independent school hobbies.
I mean, it's very easy to come up with all these amazing programs that say, oh, we offer all this independent learning opportunities and blah, 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 blah. But you don't have to worry about test scores because you don't have to do any tests, so you're-
Well, or you're so selective that you don't, you might not face the problem anyway.
Right.
I mean, you probably got more parents that are taking their kids to the doctor and the dentist regularly, right?
There is a concern about selective, one of the parts of this bill was that it was blind admissions policy. You couldn't, you know, you couldn't choose. Those who meet the criteria that you may have set.
So, while we're on the topic of independent schools, you may not be aware, 'cause I didn't see it in the paper, but the Wind Hall town-
Oh, did they vote?
And school district voted no-
They did.
To sell the school and the property to the Mountain School.
Ooh, boy.
The cost, the agreed, the tentative contract was for seven hundred thousand dollars. And I understand that one of the arguments was that the town and the members, most citizens of town felt that they'd already put a one point five million into this. And right now, with real estate assessments being low and so forth, they thought the price is not right either. But it was a hundred and twenty-three, I think, a hundred and twenty-three to seventy-eight was quoted. It was at the Wind Hall Board meeting on Monday. So, it wasn't close, so it's not likely to be reconsidered. And that is an interesting vote, note, it will be noted probably politically statewide. And this now will lead to the Mountain School having to renegotiate a lease with two entities, with both the school district for the building and the town for the land. And of course, that board is concerned, the private school board is quite concerned about what they can do to make ends meet. And so, I imagine there'll be increasing recruitment initiative from the Mountain School, which has already been quite intense, we felt, in Jamaica and other neighboring towns. Including Dover.
Hard to compete with private.
Yeah. So, let's see, anything else on my report that needs clarification? I do appreciate that, that opportunity to clarify.
That was a little vague, I couldn't quite-
Yeah, well, I wanted to make sure that, part of my, I think part of my responsibility is, of course, the school and the instruction in the schools that we have here, but also this issue about what's going on at the state level is very important. And I know that I'm not as in tune to it as I, you know, could be if I had more time. I will pass a couple of things out to you. Why don't we take both, give this for Durin on his side? But we can go this way. Anyway, this is the calendar of next year.
You don't have to?
No, I'm okay, I got it pretty well memorized, pass it on.
Do we need, does Tara need?
I don't think she'll need it for this, but we'll get it out, I have access. So, now, what this is, is, first of all, the one that is clearest is our own calendar for next year. That's what Bomman was referring to, he received by email, you all received that by email?
Yep.
With that terrible news about June twenty-first, yeah. Now, there is a new calendar being issued for this year regarding the last day of school for students that'll soon be online. We wanted to wait till the snow days were done. And of course, the adjustment that you made today in Leland and Gray's schedule has to be noted there, as well as other schools may have some other changes at the elementary level. Those school boards need to have the same opportunity to make a judgment as you did, if necessary, if asked. Now, this Champlain Valley Superintendent's Vision Calendar Committee proposal is the summary that you were referring to regarding a proposal on school-wide, sorry, year-round school. And it's a visual reminder of this issue, and actually something concrete that you could look at and compare, and what it means. This actually is supposed to be implemented two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. Not this fall, but next.
It's not, just clarification, it's not year-round school, there's still July and August are off.
Well, you can see with that big black there.
It's just broken out in different ways, vacations or vacation.
But you can see that Bomman didn't have a problem with that because graduation's even later, I think it is, or not. But they only have a hundred and seventy-
There's not an awful lot of different days.
This calendar only has a hundred and seventy-five days for students. So, keep in mind, that's not comparing quite fair to what you presently have here.
It's like, gives the kids two weeks vacation through, you know, every, what is it, four weeks or something? And then two, four, four or five weeks, and then two weeks.
That's how it is for my exchange students in Germany. They're obvious on the two-week vacations.
Right.
It's like, ah, again?
Because it can be a real travel. But, I mean, it's great if you have means. This would also be great, I'm sorry, if we had, we were able to allocate our Twenty-First Century money this way so that we would have programs during these two weeks. Could be like catch-up time and Richmond, that could happen then.
There's some harsh feedback on this, where people are frustrated, you know? There's a lot less difficulty with this than there is with year-round schooling. A lot of people really want their kids to have summers off still, for whatever reasons. But this kind of thing, change is always hard, but, you know, we have to be sensitive to parents and the employment. We're talking, at this level, we're on the high school level, and it's a little easier to overlook the difficulties that kindergartners and first graders, you know, you have to have.
I'm certainly not ready to make a, take a position or a recommendation on this specific proposal. But the reason why I brought Cher with you is because last night at the Townsend Board, the Townsend Board has been interested in this topic before, and raised it at the WCSC board level. And they certainly will be raising it in terms of a retreat, a possible retreat discussion in August. So, I thought that I'd best apprise the rest of the boards about this, about this thought. And this certainly, there's no sense us trying to make up everything on our own. This is the product of a lot of consideration, a lot of thought by a number of supervisory unions in the Champlain Valley. So, they've been at it for a couple of years, so.
Would there be any cost savings, like in school, energy and things like that?
Yeah, I think that's exactly what we would do. Yeah, I think exactly, that's exactly what we would want to explore if we were- You know, first of all, there has to be a desire to explore, and then it has to be direct administration to explore, and then those parameters. I do question, I did question Superintendent presenting this at the superintendent's meeting, that they're funding those little two-week times through the Century Twenty-One monies. And of course, we do have that grant as well. But I would want to take care that that didn't detract from the actual after-school activities that we have going on as well. So, I don't, I don't, I don't expect that there's going to be any cost savings on this. That has been an argument in other places regarding heating and cooling of buildings. But in fact, you can see that we would be using our school facilities for those two-week breaks. We wouldn't just be closing them down, we'd be providing remediation and additional supplementary learning opportunities for students that wanted to participate. So, anyway, that's, like I said, the view of the hour, I don't wanna take up more time for you. I do have another piece of paper I'll pass around that shows you what the boards' meetings are scheduled for the, for this. You know, all the boards organize, and you all decide when you're gonna meet. And this just gives you a little visual reminder of when different boards meet.
So, we'll know where you're gonna be each night?
Yeah, if you wanna ring my bell, you know where you're gonna be. And the only improvement, or at least reduction in the number of board meetings is that Board's Borough's gone from two meetings a month to one.
Good for them.
But-
At least I've got a couple of musicals on.
Yep, yep.
Should I feed you at Wind Hall or Jamaica?
Yeah, well, that's where I run between. Last night, I was from Wind Hall to-
How about tonight, Dover and us?
You know, despite this, you keep changing the meetings, you know, it's, so it's just-
Oh, we can't make it that nice, we're gonna move it?
Oh, I see what I had here, let me call your attention to this. Yeah, it's coming up later. This lovely item here, you probably wonder why I brought this here today. Those of you in Jamaica should not be wondering about this. I read in the paper about this wonderful student, Bowen Amadon.
Oh, yeah.
And he's been making, he's ten years old, and he's been making syrup. So I bought some. And you can see his tag and his little card here. It's really quite sweet.
Here, I thought he was giving a whisper cap. Quite sweet.
No, I'm going to get that in my office. I've had it on the desk where Allison is. People walk in, you know. I mean, actually, this leads, as a little segue, to what I hope happens at the May 22 meeting. I talked to the principals about this. I really think that that meeting of the WCSU board should be a more demonstrative example of student achievement and accomplishment and learning. And so I expect and hope that there'll be some actual projects, some actual artifacts, some actual work by students, presentations. We just had the, I think I emailed you this announcement, but Ansel Romerding, Ron Romerding, you know, this is, once again, can be attributed to an consistent investment over time in the Journey East program and the Chinese teaching language instruction here.
State standard, because I want to make sure everybody knows what that is.
And, okay, so Ansel competed with 1,000 students across the nation and...
Played second.
And placed second. And a student in Maine actually took first place. And so that was quite, quite impressive accomplishment. And that kind of, that kind of accomplishment doesn't happen overnight.
Absolutely not.
It's a long-term commitment.
Chinese, and he did Tai Chi for his...
Well, his speech was on Tai Chi and ping pong, or something like that. Was it ping pong and, I'm sorry, it's in that email that I sent.
It's on a little gray website.
Yeah, it's really a...
And there are other students in that announcement as well that Miss Chen...
Yeah, there were who did well.
That's really remarkable.
It is.
Yeah, the gold star for Leland Gray.
Now, and just say, you know, that's one of the reasons why Tom Chen was Teacher of the Year as well.
Well, certainly, certainly, that's right. And we certainly want to try to hang on, hang on to our services.
The students were blown away at the conference. One of them said to me, they were kids there from California and Hawaii. And they all came to Boston to compete in Chinese.
It's incredible.
Really made a lasting impression.
Yeah, it's just phenomenal.
Well, another...
And we had other kids there.
Yeah, what are the other names?
Alana Redden, Jesse Cannella, Jake Sherman, Thatcher Wynott, and Paige Gargit.
So, anyway, that's...
That's really neat.
That's very positive. Now, I have one other positive thing that I heard about today. And this was on a public radio program with a very gifted 25-year-old Chen Yu, I think is his name. And he's a Chinese, ethnic Chinese who was born in Ho-Ha. And he is a fabulous violinist. He's like the latest, you know, most fabulous violinist alive or something like that, like Joshua Bell was, you know, is he? So he's on the radio with his teacher from the England Conservatory. And they're talking, and it's a call-in show. I mean, it's part of it is call-in, so people can call in and make their comments. And people have called in, yeah, that's right. Called in about, you know, complimenting the violinist. And he spoke very well. He was quite articulate young man. He claims he only practices 30 minutes a day. And he, but what he does is that he practices in his mind visually 10 times for every one time he actually practices on the film.
Interesting.
And he ties in the visual and all that. And he's obviously, you know, quite a brilliant kid, quite gifted. And he went to Shanghai early at the age of 11 to go to the conservatory there. And then he came to the United States. Well, anyway, a woman calls in from Vernon. And she says, "Well, I just want to call your attention to Leland and Greg that has this program." She says, "I've had students from Ho-Ha living with me in my home with my students and so forth." I don't know whether she relocated to Vernon, she's calling from Vernon by phone or how this happened. But it was not a last-name situation. But she was complimenting some of the programs. Is her first name Linda?
I think so.
Okay, well, that's...
Yes.
Well, that might be it. But anyway, so she lives in Vernon.
Jackson's mom was in Vernon?
I think Jackson was also, had a parent in Marlborough or something.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Jackson's mom was in Marlborough.
Well, anyway.
Remember, we went to a dinner...
I'm just pointing out to you that, you know, that was a call-in program where somebody called in from New Orleans. Somebody called in from, I don't know, San Francisco or something. And, you know, then we got Vernon.
They mentioned you.
It's amazing how many Vermonters call in and get on though. I'm always impressed by all these nationwide programs and Vermonters are calling in and getting on the radio. I think it's great.
You're all addicted to public radio or something.
We are. We very much support public radio in this stuff.
Okay, guys, we'll have to move on.
All right, move on. I don't want to give you, I don't want to give you any more good news. Let's move on. We've had it with this good news.
All right, so the, that's it, huh?
That's it.
Okay, so a report on RED study committee. Is that other piece on here?
Well, I don't...
The board representation, you're going to bring that up under your business?
Yeah, that's new business. Okay, so... We put it together.
That doesn't matter, the RED study committee, we're still studying. That's about all I can say. You know, we haven't moved, we haven't moved forward. And I would suggest that maybe we are...
Something going on?
Yeah, there's not a lot of forward momentum. There's been some wind taken out of sails. I think there's some frustration around. Jamaica's kind of had a, had a little adjustment in their participation as well as maybe even Townsend's a little bit now. But we did take a vote, we did vote, didn't we?
Yeah, there was a motion to disband or just came in.
That's right, there was a motion to discontinue the study and it failed pretty soundly. I don't, can't remember if there were any, there were a couple who said they wanted it to end. But the rest were in support of continuing it.
Huge change, and it's got to be so scary.
It is, and to be honest, it is, it is, in some ways, I know the legislature was well-intentioned and our, the legislature, especially those who were involved with the writing of 153 and 156, are a little frustrated that more school districts have not, or SUs have not taken on this opportunity, as they call it. But honestly, after having worked with this bill, these bills, and still continuing to try to make adjustments where is needed, I realize that I tend to think this bill is really, this system is set up for failure. I really do. I don't, there are so many questions you can't answer today. There are just still so many questions that continue to come up that just cannot be answered. Like, is the RED board held to the articles of agreement or to decisions that the RED committee makes, you know? And it doesn't appear they are, but I don't really know. I mean, there's so many great unknowns in this, and it's been very frustrating. There are, there's also a trend to try to, you know, focus locally, focus on smaller centered learning and not thinking more broadly. And, you know, it's a little easier for us sitting around this table because we are a melting pot of quite a number of towns. But for individual schools, school districts, individual towns, it's really the lifeblood of their town and they have a really hard time thinking about it from any other perspective. They feel it's a threat, that loss of governance. They feel like it's a threat. I, you know, I don't know how to address that issue. I honestly don't. I've been trying in so many ways. So, you know, we're continuing to move forward.
We're going to meet on May 1st.
That's right, sorry, next meeting.
Just to give a little historic perspective, the committee's been meeting for close to two years. And it nearly folded and gave up earlier when the Jamaica representatives pointed to the possibility of a joint school or a school serving both Jamaica and Townsend. And that really revived the committee in interest in the prospects of financial savings while expanding learning opportunities for students, which is an ideal situation. But I think the, well, the last meeting that we had was supposed to be about visioning what the new RED would provide or expect for learning opportunities and therefore give Frank and me an opportunity to be specific and be more secure in the projected costs. So, but at the beginning of the meeting, the representative chairman from Townsend Board, April Chase, spoke to the issue that she confronted in her town, admittedly apart from board meeting. Well, they did have an information meeting where the same issue came up, and that was that people didn't want to part with their school. They didn't want, they, they want to stick...
They felt that the building was in good shape and it was centrally located. They didn't want to send their kids farther away.
Yeah, so then Jamaica says, "Well, what the heck? I mean, you know, why, why should we be in this thing if there's not going to be a new school? Because after all, you know, if we have to send our kids to Townsend or wherever else, it's a long, a long ways." You know, similar argument from Wyndham. So I, you know, that's, that's why the meeting, once again, ended up with such a rather disappointing, you know, realization that perhaps this well-intended group just can't come up with something. Now, the...
But New Fane and Brookline are still quite committed.
Well, and the consultant will come back to our next meeting in May with now a proposed set of articles, taking away the new building, taking away the commitment of a building and just talk about basically the governance change and what perhaps, what savings there are there. And there are some in terms of accounting and budgeting and administrative costs, auditing and so forth. But it's not going to be a lot of money, I don't predict. And I don't know whether the communities are really feeling the pinch enough to be able to see working together.
Right, but we need to get back to what we said right from the very beginning of this committee, back a year and a half ago, or a year and three quarters now, that this was, we were not being driven by financial savings necessarily. That wasn't, our first focus was going on learning opportunities for, you know, opening up learning opportunities for kids. And so we need to make sure we're still staying focused on that.
Has that been clearly spelled out, though?
No, I don't think well enough.
Because I've never really gotten what the learning opportunities would be as a result of RED. I'm sitting in on just this board. I have really, not clear to me.
Well, they are listed in the articles.
Yeah, you know that class sizes will go up.
Well, the learning opportunities are having to do with increased amount of time for the specials, we call the specials. And the, I mean, we were advocating, I was advocating for second language instruction in the elementary schools universally, which is unsupportable right now. And, I mean, most boards can't afford it. But I think that where the disconnect is, is that I accept the fact that most towns will continue to vote yes for a budget to keep their local school open. They've proven that time and time again, despite the increases in the budget. And they do not see, they don't make a connection with the economic forecast and enrollment forecast that really make it hard for a person like me to say in five years, you're going to be able to have that school still.
But when you have, you know, yeah, you can, you can keep your school open. But is it a shell of a building with programs cut because you've said you want your administrator to level fund your budget?
Yeah, well, so far...
You know, that's...
What I'm saying is, so far, we haven't seen a school going without PE or a school going without transportation or a school going without, you know, librarian or whatever. But those are the things that will, will go. And I, I, I'm sorry to say that the public is not really willing to engage in that. I mean, I met, I met with Wardsboro the other night. And, you know, they're happy with the performance of their students, which has been increasing under Rosemary Simon's leadership. And, and so there's no reason, you know, from their point of view, to do anything differently. But with 56, 57, 59 kids projected four years from now, it's, it's pretty hard to see sustaining that, that program. And if the small schools grant is withdrawn or feathered out, then maybe people will be hurting enough to realize that it's time to work together more closely.
And it's a miracle these principals have been able to do what they do under the pressure that they're under.
It's a tremendously...
It's just incredible.
And it's done.
It's a very high-quality staff and administrative group we have here. And we certainly should thank our lucky stars, we got them.
We do, and we are. And that's part of the, well, I would venture to say that's the main reason for our success here.
Well, it's true.
I really believe that.
The principal makes the weather in the building.
Absolutely. Well, so anyway, I don't know if you have any questions or if Bruce, you want to add anything, but I don't...
I found it interesting over the last couple of months now that there are arguments for the RED and then the same person will turn around and have an argument against the RED. And I'm sitting there and I'm bowled over by the fact that, that they are arguing for with one reason and arguing against with another reason. So it's a, it's a toss-up.
That's what we were doing in Model Congress this morning.
Right.
But we're talking about math literacy and math skills and seeing where we have such a gap in inability. And we didn't, and you were in catch-up mode now as a result of what was on in...
Sure.
And so...
Like Jeremy spoke.
Adding to class size, is that, I mean, making classes bigger, which will be inevitable with consolidation, how is that going to improve?
Well, we're talking about class sizes going from, you know, five or six to 12 to 15.
No, I've heard, I've heard high.
That's where a lot of these are. We're talking some really tiny class sizes. And we have, yeah, well, I know, but I mean, even setting Wyndham aside, that's, they're like that all around.
I have heard this group say, or Frank referred to them, we probably will hit the maximum in some cases for class size. Well, there's a cap, right? There's, isn't there a state cap for class size? Is it 18 or 19?
Recommended.
We, yeah, we approved actually class size policy because we had to.
So there, when you're looking at, you know, developing skills, you know, skills at that level, it seems like the smaller...
Well, that's if we close the school.
Yeah, I don't think that the, what will happen, I think, in the next RED committee is whether they will, whether they will separate the two issues, of governance and efficiency and the, and the closing of schools. Because that, you know, the RED certainly, articles don't say anything about closing the school.
You know, quality of instruction has an awful lot more to do...
But that's where you guys were before this discussion. Just let's be clear about where, this is the first time I've heard you guys really talk about governance versus consolidation.
Only because the focus changed when Jamaica chose to make it for us. And that wasn't really for anyone except Townsend and, well, I had Wyndham a little bit.
Townsend, Jamaica.
Townsend and Jamaica, just those two, because Wyndham pulled out.
And then Wyndham pulled out. But those three schools combined to form a, right, right. So that would be...
I think the next meeting will be of interest. Maybe they'll agree to meet again. Maybe they'll come to some decision and maybe they'll agree to give it up.
Yeah, I guess we'll see.
Quality of instruction, I just need to say, has an awful lot more to do with whether kids are successful in a class than size of the class, honestly. As long as they're within reason. So I think we should always focus on that, since we have some really tiny classes in this. Because we have really tiny schools. And it's changed. I mean, we haven't had, you know, our enrollment even in New Fane, it was over 200 kids when my kids were there. In New Fane alone. Now they've got how many in Brookline and New Fane? So, I mean, every school has declined enrollment here.
We had 104 Jamaican officers there.
And now you're down to 70 or something like this. So I, I mean, you know, it's just something we have to address.
The 70s up there again.
I brought two black copies of this thing that you generated.
Yeah, hand them out.
And one of the questions on there was...
These aren't something we've talked about yet because we have never had the conversation, unfortunately. It's been on the table and we keep delaying it.
But just, you were talking about class size, and that's one of the questions that's on here.
I would say that as a concern for some, for the people in this group, as a concern.
It's a strange number. It's a very strange number because this is a DOE number.
Well, like Stephen said, we have a policy.
A whole bunch of things that you don't even realize. But these are the questions that we were, I don't know.
Yeah, he'll make, he'll make policy at home. And if you, you know, if you have any feedback on any of those, please get ahold of either Joe or Bruce or I, or come to meeting if you want, if you feel like giving feedback on those. come to the meeting if you want, if you feel like giving feedback on those, we'll have a conversation.
They're very interesting questions to consider.
Um, it's getting really late, so let me just, quick, go to the status report and then join SU Study Committee, we're, it's on, you know, it's still on the table, we're waiting for a report coming out of, for this initial one. We're still going to address the question about whether we will sign on to a contract with Wyndham Southwest Supervisory Union to study, Stephen, how, how do we want to put that?
I think it's study more...
It's really breaking the border, line borders of, as soon as, really, governance borders.
The governance and jurisdiction.
And it will not only be, Wyndham Southwest needs to have another SU to sign on to get the grant to fund this study, and they're asking us to do that. Our board has not yet made a decision whether we're going to do that or not, but it will probably involve all Wyndham County Supervisory Unions, just so you know, and, and we'll keep you up to date on where we're going with that. So, we can move on to new business, if no one has any questions on either of those things under all business?
Let's just point out, these questions were posted on the Red site as well.
So, Stephen, you want to, we're on A there.
Yeah.
Do you want to address that?
So, these went out to every board member, but just to remind you, there's a chart that has the different options for voting, and you might want to visualize...
The decision was made at the Wyndham Central Supervisor Union Board to everyone go home and, and take this, these recommendations, these options, I should say, take these options back to your board, get your feedback, and then it will come back to the executive committee who will make the decision on which option to, to adopt, if they choose to adopt one. That will be on April 24th?
Yep.
So, I made the very bold statement, thinking that I was probably correct on saying that there, I didn't get any indication that anyone would have ever considered options E1 or E2, because it really does take away all the authority of the towns who were interested in forming a Red, going from their full membership down to just three, as statute states. Of course, statute, you know, can be adjusted. The intention of Act 153 and 156 was not to undermine the authority or the role of individual school districts if they join a Red, and so you can get a waiver and change your voting membership, that's what this is. But it did sound like there was feedback from one town...
Oh, yeah.
It felt like they were interested in options E, or E1 or E2, which I find very frustrating to me, because, again, I, the state, the legislators have said that they've been very disappointed that more towns haven't taken advantage of the opportunity to form regional education districts, or modified unified union districts, MUDs, but, but if school districts in an SU outside of a Red are going to take the, the stand that they want to take the minority of, for school districts and overrule the majority, which is what would happen in a case like this if four or five towns joined, how, why would we ever move forward with a Red and lose our vote at the SU level? It makes no sense for us to. So, we wouldn't even be able to make that decision for ourselves. I mean, you know, much of our, many of our services are now going through the Supervisory Union, it just wouldn't make any sense for us to lose our vote at the Supervisory Union in those four or five towns. Wyndham, I say four or five, because if Wyndham participated, it would be five, if Wyndham didn't, it would be four. So, I, I'm a little frustrated about that.
Well, I think as a board, you certainly have the opportunity to make a decision, and direct Emily to represent that decision and that opinion, recommendation at that meeting, executive committee meeting on the 24th. So, and then, in fact, what I think we find at the Red Committee quite often, as well as at board meetings regarding particularly big issues, we saw this at the Wyndham Central Supervisory Union Board Meeting, where the board itself could not make a decision on these choices, but wanted to go back and have their representatives go back to the school district boards to make a recommendation, and then defer to the executive committee deciding based on those recommendations. Now, I can't speak to all the boards. I don't know what Marlborough turned out to be, because I only attended part of their meeting and gave an opportunity to answer questions. I know, I don't know what happened to Wyndham on that day, but I, I do know that Townsend went for either B, B as in boy, or, or D. They didn't see too much difference between those two, they could go either way on that. I'm trying to think of what other board meetings I've been at. Wardsboro, first of all, was heading towards something like D or E, D or B, but they, they ended up coming down in favor of E, and they argued that they didn't want to give up any more of their power, and they'd have more power if they, if Red reformed, they stuck to their vote.
Yeah, they sure would.
So, so they took a rather, you know, a proclam, a proclam position, basically, and I, I don't know whether, when the board chairs come for the executive committee meeting on the 24th, whether there'll be more such, such opinion, and, you know, but this is another reason why this initiative regarding combining boards and having more coherent, more coherent approach to governance is, is following Act 153 and 156 having trouble. I mean, this is, we're, you know, we got it all, we got it all happening right here, you know? Now, we will not have Win Hall coming to the next executive committee meeting. They, they really recognize that, that, you know, their nickel isn't going to be in this dime anymore, so they're not taking an opinion or a stance on it. I didn't meet with them on Monday, and they're, they're not going to send a representative, so...
Did option C get any votes?
Uh, well, at Townsend last night, it was rejected because it, it, it was just too, you know, wild.
A little complicated.
Really not practical. I mean, it, it real, I, I put it in there because our consultant, John Everett, had proposed it as an illustration of how fine you could get with this based on population, but I, I don't, no, no board has really considered that to be comprehensible, or really, I mean, you know, efficient or reasonable.
Are any of these models considered to be optimal for having a quorum most of the time, and things like that?
Well, you raise an issue that has not come up, you raise an issue that hasn't come up at the other board meetings, but I do think that when you're trying to decide between the choices here, if either, once you reject E or not, but I mean, the, the size of the board does make a difference, and that's why I put those columns in there about the number, number that would be required for a quorum, and, and the number on the executive committee. So, it's, you know, it's, it's a matter of some debate and personal feeling about whether 21 is a good number, or 11's a good number, or, you know, there's not much difference between 18 and 19, but there is quite a bit of difference between the present 28 and 11, or, or even 21 in some people here, or 18 or 19, and 13 to 16. So, you have a number, you know, you have quite a range of choices there, but as far as politically what's workable and so forth, I, you know, my experience is that you can argue that if you have a lot of members, you got a better chance of a quorum, because if somebody's sick, you got somebody to cover. But on the other hand, I argue that when you have a board of five, I don't see that the boards of five have an easier time getting a quorum than the boards of three. They only need two people to get a quorum of three, for three. And I've attended, you know, such a meeting recently, the Win Hall Board took action on Monday night based on just two, two members.
But the, the E, options of E, you know, one is with Wyndham, one is without, but when Wardsboro had the conversation around that and decided they wanted to go with option E, that is essentially what we are today. It just means if we became a Red, everybody else keeps their votes, but the towns who are participating in the Red would lose the bulk of their votes.
Well, and I, I point out in my, I point out in my remarks, and I pointed out to the board, that there's no way, in my opinion, that E would stand up in court. If, if one of the towns said, look, this is not fair, this is not one person, one vote, they would win it.
So, I guess that's why I'm asking if, what, what Wardsboro's reasons were, I, it makes like no sense to me, I don't think anyone would take that stand, and I'm very surprised that they won't, so...
Well, I mean, I don't want to predict what's going to happen, but I'll be surprised if their representative doesn't...
I'm just looking at why, that's all.
Well, I mean, I, I, I know there was a comment made about, about stopping the Red, they just don't want to have it happen.
Oh, well, that makes sense, because that will work.
Yes.
That's disappointing, but thank you. Go ahead.
The only place, the only column where we count Leland and Gray is, is the first one. If the Red fails to continue, is option like D1 or D2 still possible if we add back the Leland and Gray count of representation?
Well, you can't legally, see, what, if you form a Red, a WCED, you don't have a Leland and Gray entity in the Gray.
Right, that's, that's the way these...
So, you can't have a representation of an entity that doesn't exist.
That's the way these numbers are.
Right, and if you...
And that's why they're based on population.
And you'll, and you'll note that our present, column D2, that looks suspiciously, suspiciously likely on a Gray's board, doesn't it? You got 11 people there.
Well, the total is, the total is, in D2, the total number would be 18.
Right.
But if the Red failed, how many would you...
The Red failed, it goes back to...
It would go back to column one, and none of these others are possible.
Back to the WSU versus, versus, that's right.
Yeah, see, they're all, everything to the right is based upon a, a Red being voted, either with or without Wyndham.
Yeah.
And, but you see, the 11 votes, that's exactly, I kept them separately there, because actually you would, you know, there would be an elected representative from Brookline on the WCED, and there would be four from the New Fane, and those numbers correspond with our present Leland and Gray membership board. That's why that 11 looks, should look like a familiar number to you. And 10 would be a difference, because Wyndham would no longer be on this board, on the, on the Red board, and they'd continue to be an independent school district board with, with three members on their own board, and, and three members voting, you know, as an independent district.
So, I guess my, my question was, there's no way to reduce the number of representatives from 28 if the Red fails? There's no other way to reduce that number?
Not by law, not by popular law.
We could, we could actually get a waiver from the State Board to change our membership at the Wyndham Central.
Or do it by population, for example.
We, we could say we only want two reps from each town, and one half a vote or something from a non-operating. I mean, we could do that, I think others SUs around the state have done that, you know? That's not something we've talked about at that, at the SU level, because what brought this out was the Red anyway. We changed our bylaws, as you know, at Wyndham Central to change, to give the authority for most decisions to the executive committee, which effectively has done almost exactly what you're suggesting anyway. It's given the authority to a much smaller group of people to make decisions around the SU level, and that was unanimously supported by a very well-attended meeting back in December, I think it was, when we first voted to do that, and then we supported the bylaws change at our last meeting, which had the best, I think, turnout we've had in a long time. So...
I think, I'm jumping a little far ahead, but it would be possible for the WCSU board to take over greater responsibility for budgeting, policy, and so forth, if the local standard, the local board, school districts, actually were able to formally defer that power, or that authority. But that's, that's a little sticky legally right now, you know, if, if, if a citizen in Jamaica said, but wait a minute, our local school district board has to vote on all policy, that's what it says in law, they could justify that by law. But, I mean, that really is, you're, you're addressing the same issue about, about governance in a more broadly-based cohesive manner. And this is not a strange topic to Leland and Gray board members, it's just tremendously strange to people who are in their own towns, on their own boards.
It's really hard for school districts themselves to think that way. They can't change the way they view education and the way they deliver it differently, it's really hard. So, anyway, yeah.
Do you want to make a, ask a question about these questions?
Sure.
So, these questions are related to if we went forward with a new school?
A number of them are.
So, but then, just...
They were written prior to the, sort of, this, our last meeting.
Are these relevant? I mean, where are...
Well, that's a good question. A lot of them will, will not be as relevant anymore.
Okay, because you really...
Because you do understand it was just at our last meeting where that happened, so, and these were developed in February, January.
The construction of a new school is now off the table, is that, is that where we...
I don't think...
Yeah, never.
No, I don't think it's off the table. I don't think it's off the table.
I just wanted to know.
But I do think that there's been, you know, stumbling block from Townsend on that.
Okay.
There, there are extensive...
If I get asked in my community, I want to know.
It's not off the table, we'll still talk about it, we'll see. That's why we're going to have this, that's why this is on the agenda.
Are you guys going to answer these questions?
We're hoping at it. I, I don't want to make any promises, because we've had on the Red...
That was the intention for two meetings.
For two previous meetings, and it's just been bumped because of other more pressing concerns by the committee.
It has come up, right, right, right.
So, so, but it is on our committee, and we did say specifically, we're going to talk about it, and it's going to be early in the meeting, so I've got my fingers crossed that we will please come if you'd like.
There are two versions of articles that are going to be presented on the table at the next meeting, one with the school and one without.
And one, the one already appears on the website, and the, and the other one is yet to be received from the consultant.
Okay, so are we supposed to be saying what option we vote for?
Well, it would help if you guys gave me direction on that, because I'll be the one who's representing us, although you're all welcome to come to that meeting on the 24th, we only get one vote at that.
So, you're going to vote on this based on what we say tonight?
Yeah, and I'm going to really encourage you not to say E, because you don't want to lose all your, all your power at Wyndham Central, other than that, I'm not going to give you any advice.
I like option B. That sounds like a good issue.
Using a larger board then, you're saying?
Adds closer to what we have now, I think. The size by size, you know, size-wise.
Yeah, the difference is in Jamaica, with three, so Jamaica would have three votes rather than two, if you compared B to D. And also Wyndham.
It's really important to actually take a look back at what the, what the, yeah, the basis for them are, and you don't actually have to, I don't think, let's see, the, well, you're going to give me something else to do.
Well, the other differences between B and D, as well, is Wyndham, Wyndham would have one vote on B and two votes on D, if they remained independent. Now, if they were part of the Red, then it'd be one and one anyway, but, you know, you have to compare, that's why, that's what the board wanted me to do, make a chart like this, which took me about eight hours, by the way, to get all these different things together.
That's what we, that's what we want our...
Yeah, well, well, I could have been doing, I could have been doing other things, but I, I took it on, because I found it an intellectual challenge to be objectively comparative, and I didn't...
It actually suggested our consultant do it instead of...
I didn't want to depend upon our consultant at long distance to do that. You know, sometimes when I'm at board meetings trying to defend something, I'd rather be the source of the problem rather than attribute it to somebody else.
So, B is based on percentage of population, I think if you look at the Ds, you have to look at the page four to really understand them. I mean, A and B are percentages of the population like that, and...
Because there's nothing here that says each town gets two people, and then there's at-large people.
No, there're no, there's no concept of at-large. That would be another interesting topic, but there would be some question about how the heck they would get elected in our SU.
Well, like I told you, my old school district in New Hampshire, they, that's how they do it, and all the towns vote on those at-large.
Right, but I'm just saying that if you consider all, if it includes generally all, Marlborough, Dover, and so forth, it's, you know, you're approaching something that's even beyond what the concept of the legislature is regarding representation, so I think it would be interesting, I certainly applaud the thought. Just to be clear, you can see, option A is by population, 10% per rep, you know, more or less close to that, and then B is by 5%, that's why you have more representatives on the, on the option B.
So, that's not quite as strategic, I don't think.
Right, okay, so then you go to D. Now, D is based on... Now, D is based on the premise that we maintain as close as possible the present balance of power among the towns.
Exactly.
So that's why that is a little bit different than the straight population in some towns' cases, in the case of some towns, I should say. And then E, we already discussed that, that's, and that was obliged to be included, because Rich Warner from Dover at the board meeting, as some of you were there probably know, said, well, if we don't do anything, what happens? And that's what happens. And the other thing is, everybody's ticked off, to use strong language, I'm sorry to say, and the boards are a little put off, that they have to discuss this, because it's a what-if.
Point, right.
And, you know, we don't...
And honestly, you know, we have no idea whether we make a recommendation, the RED, to the RED committee, whatever, it may change with a new board down the road if something ever did happen, so...
Right, because they'll be able to.
They're not bound by us.
They'll be able to.
That's right. So, I would put too much effort into this, in some ways, but it does...
But it, but it isn't the doings of the RED committee, that's what the, why this is before you, because you're after all not part of the RED committee. But it is part of the WCSU board's responsibility to have a proposal about, well, if this RED gets formed, what the heck are we doing?
And to be fair, the RED committee, there were certain members on the RED committee who really were quite concerned about moving forward with the RED if they didn't know how the boards were going to stand. Now, I think the RED committee would be fine, as long as they know that the perspective of the Wyndham Central Board is not E. You know, if they're, if they're not trying to take away our power, they probably, the RED committee would probably not be too concerned about which of the other options, because the rest of them are all fair, you know, and balanced. But if, but I think the RED committee did, in fact, we had one RED committee member said, they really wanted to know, are they, are we going to lose all of our power at Wyndham Central? So, take it to the Wyndham Central Board and ask. And so that's why we're here. So, I, I mean, I don't, go ahead.
I looked at, and I think this is what Stephen did right at the begin, right at the beginning, I looked at column one, and the, if Wyndham was not in the RED, there were 12 RED members, and, no, 12 RED votes and 13 other votes from other schools. And if you look at D1, there were 10 schools from RED, in the RED, and nine from other schools, so the proportion is similar, and to me, either D1 or D2 has a similar proportion.
Right, that was what it was based on, was proportion.
If I had to vote right now, I'd say either of the Ds.
Yeah, that's my vote, too.
Okay, and the Ds actually are only different in that whether Wyndham's part or Wyndham isn't, just so everybody understands.
I think that's most fair.
Yeah, I tend to agree, actually.
I don't know what benefit we are, you know, you're getting from this whole kind of regitribation, but whatever.
I mean...
That's not a question to ask. Not a quarter to 10 at night.
Sorry, but I don't need to vote, but it sure would be, I mean, I'm giving feedback, I'll be the one who ends up having to vote, but I would like to, my vote reflects your wishes on this floor, so...
Go around and give an opinion, each of you, two of you can give an opinion.
I gave mine.
But two?
Yep, I gave mine.
Yes, yes, I'd like to move on from this subject.
Okay, so, so there's, there's two votes for D, and, oh, I thought you said C.
And you said B, she was B.
Oh, B, okay, one B.
More to D if that was...
You're on, you're on B, these two are on D.
I'm on D.
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 Okay. Thank you, that's what I needed. See, Bomber, how quickly it can happen.
All right.
All right, where are we now? I'm ready to go home. Presentation of the Vermont Common Core, assessment to have done that.
Oh, it isn't, now, this is that Vermont Comprehensive Assessment, too.
Yeah, it is comprehensive, it's not common.
Okay?
Okay.
There's note that, that correction.
We're not going to do the next item in our work calendar, because I just honestly don't have...
And the only thing about that is...
We don't have a full board to do it well, again.
Right, yeah, but that, that calendar, that year-round calendar is the only thing that's come up from the other boards.
Okay.
Okay. Hold the paper.
Okay, so, I've got, boy, I've got quite a few warrants here, from 3:15 down to 4:09, which is today, totaling $634,497.14. I have four payrolls, 37, 38, 39, and 40, totaling $224,808.15. Total warrants and payrolls are $859,305.29. I need a motion.
Who?
Bomber moved it, is there a second?
I'll make a second.
And Bruce seconded it. Any comments, questions, feedback, changes? Everything's been reviewed and two signatures on?
It was much easier.
They were very easy.
So you're, you're enjoying the new, new method?
That might be gone a little far, but...
It's pretty hard to say you're enjoying warrants and payrolls.
It's easier than it was for the last month.
Okay, that's good, that's good to know, that it's, and I think Frank would appreciate that feedback, because I know he's been really going through quite a struggle with this turnover down there.
No, they've arrived, so, well...
Well, no, they don't claim that yet, but they're getting there. This, that's actually the summary that you saw tonight, he's still providing that.
Thank you, actually, for that feedback, because I think that's important.
You know, on his own laptop, not as a product of the actual software.
Yeah, I liked that thing tonight, that was pretty cool.
But that's the goal, to get the software program to do that, so...
Okay, you ready to vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Okay, motion passes. We have a consent agenda, just need a motion on it, unless you want to pull the minutes out of the consent agenda. If everybody's okay with those minutes, they can actually, we actually don't even need to, we can approve it by consensus if you want, with a consent agenda. We will consider the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of March 12th only, approved by consent. Next meeting, you see them there, you want to hear them, say them out loud, May 14 is our next board meeting, April 24 is our executive committee meeting, and May 22 is our Wyndham Central full board annual meeting.
When's the next RED meeting?
May 1st.
May 1st, I would have it in there.
It's not on here. May 1 is RED.
I'm slipping.
Where?
And May 1 is RED, 7 o'clock here.
It's already gone, under the table.
That was in my report, but...
It wasn't your report, it's on there. Okay?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second, thank you.
Okay, Jeremy seconded it, all in favor?
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, guys, thank you for great questions tonight.
Yeah, great discussion.
And great feedback.